Community, for example, we are sincere when we say we would like to arrive at the point in time where we can truly say we are a no-kill city. But even if we never arrive there anytime soon, what we would like to do is remove ourselves from the list of cities that kills tens of thousands of animals a year. And that's going to take a lot of hard work, but what it's going to take is being honest with ourselves. And right now, we don't have a head of a department that has been searched for, what have you. We have an interim, she's doing a fine job, but the process still remains for us to find a permanent general manager, as far as I understand. So that being the case, I would hope and expect that as a commissioner, you would have some input on that. Can you give me an example of something that you would like to see in a general manager, in that search, that we would be satisfied with? Should we find someone that we're satisfied with? Give us an example of something that you feel is paramount or important with that individual.
Well, I think we need to find somebody who's dynamic. I think that because, as Councilman Smith has already pointed-
Can you put the mic a little closer?
Yes. Sorry, nothing's to microphones. As Councilman Smith already pointed out, it's a contentious issue. There are people that are passionate, and we have to bring all those passions together and find somebody who can unite everybody, because I believe that, in the end, everybody wants to save the animals, whether they're the radical animal people or the common sense ones. Everybody has the same goal, so we need somebody who can remind everybody that there is common ground, and it is putting these animals, these adoptable animals, into people's homes. I was recently on the East Coast, and I went into the North Shore Animal League, which is one of the world's largest no-kill facilities, and I met with them and asked them questions. But I think those are the kind of facilities where we might be looking for a new general manager. You know, someplace that's already done it, that's already become a no-kill facility. And honestly, I wouldn't have accepted this if I didn't think it was possible. Animals are so important to me, I rescued them my entire life, so I believe that we have to believe it's possible, and I do believe it is, and we just have to work harder.
Any other members wishing to be heard? If not, let's go ahead and prepare the roll on the nomination. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Thank you and congratulations. Welcome aboard.
Thank you very much.
Wednesday's item one was a first consideration for an amendment to the water rates ordinance, explaining what she believes is a water rate increase. Chair of the Energy and Environment Committee, District Nine Councilmember Jan Perry, has a dialogue with the new interim general manager of the Department of Water and Power, S. David Freeman.
The item before us today is about shortage year water rates, and there are several proposed water rate actions, including a low-income lifeline subsidy, 15% increase, medical use allocation for special medical equipment use, council review increase from 15 days to 30 days, technical adjustment for Tier Two rates, and the horse allocation subsidy. Now, the department has asked that this item be sent back to them for further review, and I think, given that this is a bad economy and with new management, this is a very prudent request, because my concern is essentially what this amounts to, is a rate increase. I want Mr. Freeman just to give us a little bit of information about the balance of labor costs juxtaposed with operations and maintenance costs, because I have a few recommendations I'd like to share with him to make a better assessment of this proposal, so he can give us a minute, just maybe a few seconds, talking about labor costs and whether or not they've affected your operations and maintenance costs.
They're about-
Stop my time?
About 75% of our O and M cost, labor costs, are, though they dramatically affect our total costs.
And as you move forward, I would expect you're going to develop some strategies in-house to make some adjustments to reduce your operational costs? Is that something you're thinking about?
More than thinking about it. If my good friend, Councilwoman Smith, will forgive me, I am the inspector general and the ratepayer advocate put together.
Oh, okay.
I intend to go over the budget like it hadn't been gone over in a long, long time, because my customers are all hurting, and I cannot come before Perry, or you, or anyone else, and ask for rate increase for either electricity or water until we have gone over the budget and cut it to the bone. And that is exercise, I started yesterday afternoon, and we will persist, and so I had the misfortune of being at the table the last time we got guidance from you and I heard what you said, so we're into cutting costs and coming back to this council with something that I can look you in the eye and say, "We really need it."
Talking about the recent second-tier rate increase, District Twelve Councilmember Greg Smith does not believe the current citywide water conservation program was particularly well thought out.
What we're talking about here today is, first of all, the basic request I had was to look at some other things that we needed to think about when we passed the Tier Two rate increase proposal during the summer that hadn't been thought out, and I think we were kind of in a rush to judgment. And you mentioned that, you know, you are the advocate, and we've got a motion coming in. I totally trust you, you know our relationship, I have great respect for you and great trust for you, but you, like me, won't be here forever. And there's been general manager of that department-
Think for yourself, sir.
Yeah. You may be, you may be. I wouldn't be surprised. But the point is that there have been general managers in the past that I have not agreed with, I don't think we're good managers of that department, have not helped the department. The difference is, today we're in a different world.
You're correct.
And that began a decade ago, in 2004, when Mr. Cardinals I brought forward the plan that says, "Before you do a rate increase, you're going to do that Euron-type study, you're going to go to the public with it, and it's going to be a very open process." Water and Power has been a little resilient against change, and I think we need an agent of change, I know you will be that agent of change. We need that ongoing process, so that discussion will take place in Ms. Perry's committee. We need to really open up Water and Power, like we're opening up this building, to public input and to public ideas, and that can only be good for all of us. So I'm glad you're over there, I'm glad you're going to help us reel some of these issues in. Going back to my original motion, again, it was on horses and big animals, which kind of started the snowball effect of discussions, but that was what it was all about. We need to be very thoughtful how we go forward on these things and not rush to judgment. I think we rushed to judgment on how we do the water conservation program, it wasn't particularly well thought out. I have other motions in on three-day watering rather than two. Most cities are doing three days, not two. Those are the kind of discussions I don't think we did very good job of last summer, and I think we need a go-forward basis to do that, and all of that has encompassed now into this bigger snowball that's going through the committee again. But those are the discussions we want to have, and David, I'm very happy you're there. And just to make it legal for the city attorney, on my time, there's something about your expenditure, some money for a contract, would you explain that to me in all my time?
Actually, that is outside of the subject matter description.
Not really?
I believe it is.
Okay. I tried, David. Anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
District One Councilmember Ed Reyes thanks Mr. Freeman for his service to the city. Mr. Freeman is a former DWP general manager, was president of the Los Angeles Harbor Commission, and until his appointment as interim general manager of the Department of Water and Power, he was deputy mayor assigned to environmental issues. Councilmember Reyes offers an amendment that would protect low-income users.
If we're going to send this back as part of examination of the Tier One structure, we make sure that there are protections in place for those who are consuming the least. This is not going to protect the lower-income users, who tend to use less, and that's the majority of my district, being that they are at poverty level, family of four, surviving on $21,000 a year, but also to incentivize conservation to the greatest extent possible. So we have ratepayers that are doing their due diligence, but I want to make sure we have protections for them, and that we create incentives, and that's something we can include in the discussion. I would truly appreciate that as a friendly amendment. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. I really need the help of council members to help me educate people who come to this country from places where the water is not clean, and who can't really afford it, but go out and buy water for a dollar and a half or more in the grocery store when our water is clean enough, and I need some new ideas how to get low-income people to understand that the water coming out of the faucet is clean and to use it, because my information is that there's a lot of people that, because we haven't succeeded in educating them, are spending money that they hardly don't have on water when we're selling it for two gallons for a penny. And if you have some ideas that help me tackle that problem, I'd really appreciate it.
I would be more than happy to support you in that effort. I know I have one of the most diverse districts, and I think the neighborhoods all around downtown have a strong presence of diversity, but I also know we have challenges in that the water might be clean, but when they enter the private property, enter those apartments, the plumbing in those apartments are still dating back to the 20s and 30s and-
So on our pipe.
Yeah, so that's something we can work on and facilitate, and I look forward to working with you on that.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman.
Questioning Mr. Freeman about the length of time he plans to stay on as interim general manager, District Eleven Councilmember Bill Rosendahl comments on the selection of a new GM, and says the ratepayers must be considered every step of the way.
Six months you're going to do this? Is that what you said?
Hopefully, we'll find a professional general manager, the council will approve sooner than that, but that's the limit.
I see, okay.
And I am not Dick Cheney, I'm not going to pick myself. I'm not a candidate for that job.
Okay, but you're going to help in the selection and recruitment, and you're going to get a professional, somebody with a sharp pencil who understands numbers, somebody knows how to manage people, and also understands the issues, right?
Yes, sir. But the mayor will select the person, but we will recruit a few, and then the council will either approve or disapprove. There's a process, but we intend to have an open process, we want to involve the community in the selection process, and we want to find somebody younger that can be the kind of manager you described, and stay with it for 15 or 20 years, hopefully.
Very good. Well, I look forward to that kind of recruitment, because you are a living legend, you know, you've made a big difference in your home life-
In my own mind, yeah.
-throughout the nation. There are three things that I want to make sure we always look at. I'm big into solar, my Mar Vista people are putting it on their roof, I'm about to-
Excuse me, Mrs. Rosendahl, this should be a discussion of the water rates?
Oh, it's water rates, huh? Well, you know we said that, we got to deal with solar, okay? We also have to deal with a ratepayer group of community people that have a deep interest in this, and they need to be considered every step of the way, be it the water rates or anything else. They sometimes feel they're used for a purpose and then pushed aside, but they got to be brought into the process on that.
Yes, sir. I think they have screamed their way into the process, and we will love them, whether they scream or whether they talk softly, and we will involve them. But there is in this city now a tiny screaming minority, and we need to also keep our ear to the ground and listen to the silent majority that just pay their bills and love the DWP.
Yeah, and you know, the last point is, you saw in the news this morning where pipes are bursting again, and water in my Venice is all over the streets, and the puddles are getting beyond belief and all that. Obviously, the infrastructure, whoever we bring in has got to understand how to repair the infrastructure and moving the-
We will be doubling the pace of replacement as we, over the next year as we speak. We already have in a major expansion of that in the works. We've got to replace the old pipe faster than we have, and try to find the money to do it without burdening the ratepayer too much. It's a challenge.
The last thing about the water is, without water coming in, we couldn't survive here. The Delta issues up north have to be focused on, the Colorado River, and the farmers and their use of water, so that we in Southern California can be appreciated with our needs.
It's an important issue. As a matter of fact, we need to be much stronger in saying to the farmers, "If we're going to be rationing water in Los Angeles, they need to at least meter the damn water that comes onto the farms," because that's where 70% of the water is, and the mayor was speaking out on that the other day, and I hope the members of the council join him. We need to speak up for the urban user of water, who is really not getting a fair shake out of the water deal that's being put together in Sacramento, in my opinion. The water is going for crops that are very much subsidized, at rates that are very low. We are rationing water in Los Angeles, they ought to be at least metering the water going on the farms.
Mr. Freeman, thank you for your appearance. I understand the direction is to send us back to the department for more review.
And along with Mr. Reyes's amendment-
Very well. That'll be the directive. Open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
So the request to make water rate adjustments will go back to the Department of Water and Power for further review and returned to council within 30 days. You can listen to city council meetings, as well as committee and commission meetings, on the telephone by using the city's council phone system. In the downtown area, dial 213-621-CITY. In West LA, dial 310-471-CITY. For the San Pedro area, dial 310-547-CITY. And in the San Fernando Valley, dial 818-904-9450. Just follow the recorded instructions for the meetings you want to hear. And we invite you to address the Los Angeles City Council on any item on the council agenda, as well as during public comment. You may come downtown to City Hall, or go to the Van Nuys City Hall and participate via video teleconferencing. Now, those of you living in the Harbor area can go to the San Pedro City Hall, located at 638 South Beacon Street, Room 700 in San Pedro, and also participate in council meetings via video teleconferencing. Well, that concludes our program for the week ending October 16th, 2009. On behalf of Wendell Ayala and everyone here at Channel 35, I'm Jack Popejoy. Thank you for watching, and please join us for the next Council Week in Review.
Good morning, everyone. Today is Wednesday, October the 21st, 2009. Welcome to City Hall and to the Los Angeles City Council chambers. This is a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council. Council meets three times per week, on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays, and all meetings are open to the public. For those who cannot make it to City Hall, meetings are televised via cable on Channel 35, or can be viewed by visiting our website at www.lacity.org, or at Council phone 213-621-CITY. The meeting is now in session. Madam Clerk, if you would please call the roll.
Alarcon, Cardenas, Han, Weesar, Corretts, Labonge, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendale, Smith, Weston, Zine, Garcetti, ten members present, and a core Madam President.
And what is our first item of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Rosendale moves. Ms. Han seconds. Next order of business?
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Smith moves. Mr. Corretts seconds.
Madam President, before beginning the regular agenda, there are several items that have been requested to be continued. Item number seven, request to continue that matter to Friday, October 23rd.
All right, that'll be without objection.
Item 11, there's a request to continue that matter to October 30th.
Without objection.
And the last item to be continued is item number 16, and a request to continue that matter to October 28th.
Again, that will be without objection.
First items on the agenda are items noticed for public hearings. Items one through six, Building and Safety has advised that on items one, three, five, and six, those matters can be received and filed, inasmuch as either the lien has been paid or else there's been a change in ownership.
All right, no one has called those items special, so can we open the roll on those items?
Madam President, if you wish, you could do that. Unanimous vote, if you wish.
All right, that'll be fine.
And then on items two and four, those are both also Building and Safety items, and they are confirmations of liens, and I believe there's a card on four. Would you like to call that one special?
That would be fine, yes.
And then item number two is then now before council.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
I'm sorry, item number two is still before council, and council can vote on that.
All right, all right.
And that's a confirmation of a Building and Safety lien.
Confirmation of Building and Safety, member?
Of lien, yes.
Lien, okay, great. Can we do that? There doesn't, there's no card.
A council can take a vote on that one.
Yeah, that's fine. Open, open the, Mr. Rosendale?
Do I have to answer?
No, okay, no. So, we were back on two, I believe?
Yes, Madam President.
All right, you want to open the roll on that? And if I can ask people on the sides to cut down on some of the noise, it's very difficult to hear up here. All right, so we were on two, and you were going to open the roll, close the roll, and then tabulate the vote?
Eleven ayes.
All right, thank you. Next item.
Next items, Madam President, are items for which public hearings have been held. Items seven through 20, several of the items have already been acted on, seven, 11, and 16. There's a commissioner on item number eight. Do you wish to hold that on the desk?
All right, why don't Mr. Rosendale, I had his hand up. Mr. Rosendale, and Mr. Corretts?
I believe Mr. Rosendale wanted to call 19 special.
All right, and then Mr. Corretts?
I'd like to call item 17 special.
All right, 19 and 17 have been called special. Let's open the roll on the remaining items. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Next item.
And Madam President, just for council's information, the ordinances on nine and 10 will go over for one week, and that will be October 28th.
All right.
Next items are items for which public hearings have not been held, items 21 through 35. Ten votes are required for consideration on those, and there are cards on 21, 23, 33, 34, and 35, I believe you wanted to call special.
Yes, all right. Let's open the roll on the remainder of the items.
Hold on, Ms. Perry.
Yes, okay, sorry.
Sorry. Item 24.
Okay, Mr. Cardenas calls item 24 special. Any other specials, Mr. Parks?
I didn't hear the comment on 33 and 34.
There were cards on those.
I understand there's circulating many motions on both.
And then those can be held, and on 34, there's an amendment, is it on one of the special events?
All right, any other specials, members? All right, do we have any items remaining to be voted on in that? You want to open the roll on remaining items? If there are any? Okay, great. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Next item, Madam President, is item number 36. That's closed session. Would you like to hold that matter on the desk?
Yes, please.
And then that would also go to the continuation agenda, which is item number 37, and there are cards on that. Do you wish to call that one special?
That'll be called special.
And that would take council back to the items called special and public comment.
One, yeah, one correction, I wanted to, I forgot to call item 32 special.
Would you like to reconsider that, so that can be held on the desk?
Yes. And then I just want to move it with the CAO report. And if we can, do I need to get out of the chair for that?
I'm sorry, Madam President, did you want to reconsider that one, because it's already been voted on, so?
Yeah, just move it with the CAO report. That's without?
Yeah, then do you want to reconsider that, so then you can make that motion?
Yeah, you want to vote on the reconsideration, close, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
And then my request is to just move it with the CAO report.
Okay. And then, would you like to just vote on that right now, then?
Sure. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Thank you. All right, so we will go back to public comment. We've gone through the entire agenda now?
Yes, Madam President, you have.
All right, before we go into public comment, we have a very quick presentation from the Bureau of Sanitation, so I'd like to ask the Bureau of Sanitation to go to the table, and if Mr. Zine can take over here for, yeah, we'll do 35 out of order, so they can go back to work, and Mr. Zine can take the chair. Mr. Zine, if you can come take the chair, please, for a second.
Thank you. You're proudly wearing orange shirts today, and Ms. Perry, you can talk about the orange shirts, proudly displayed.
Thank you very much. And thank you to Mr. Zaldivar from the Bureau of Sanitation for coming to the table. He's going to say just a few words, and then we will go back to public comment. The city has implemented many programs to properly manage its wastewater collection system, which is a very critical component of our city's infrastructure. In 2004, the city entered into a 10-year agreement with various government and community groups, where the city committed to reducing sewer spills through sewer cleaning, inspection, renewal, and installation of air treatment facilities. The city has met and has many times exceeded all requirements set forth during the first five years of the settlement agreement, so I'd like to ask Mr. Zaldivar to say a few words about the accomplishments of the Bureau, and the accomplishments that they have made in the area of wastewater, and I would like to say in advance, congratulations, and I'll say in advance, I hope you'll all give us an eye vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Perry, Enrique Zaldivar, the Director of the Bureau of Sanitation. We couldn't be any prouder of the work that our workers have accomplished. We couldn't be any prouder of the leadership that you have brought to us in this body, the council. You have given us the leadership to be able to have made the investments over the years. Think about the numbers that Councilmember Perry mentioned, 77 percent reduction in spills. That is a number that is historically low, 750 back in five years ago, to now a low of 150. The incidence, where it may have been commonplace to walk anywhere in the city and come across a sewer spill response crew. We want to make that site a rare sight in the city, and we have gotten there with a 77 percent reduction. Now, while we still have 150, or 159 roughly, occurring in a given year, our trend continues to be pointing downward, so we hope to be able to get this down to as close to zero as possible. Now, this is also a historic celebration, in that this was a win-win settlement agreement with the regulators, in this case, federal EPA, the Regional Water Quality Control Board, which, through your policy and the policy of the mayor, is that we always look for a way to make these a win-win types of partnerships, not always a contentious litigation kind of relationship. And so, we have also learned through this settlement agreement on how to best deal with the regulators, making it a win-win, and ultimately, the environment and our communities win. So, I want to thank you, and we appreciate you wearing the orange shirts. That's our way of telling you, and through our workers, how much we appreciate your leadership, and you honor us by wearing it and declaring today the Wastewater Worker Day. Thank you, council.
Very good, thank you. Councilmember Labonge, Mr. Labonge?
First of all, all the wastewater water workers stand up and be recognized by the council. Give them a big hand. Thank you, Ms. Perry, for your leadership on this. We were in the rotunda with Commissioner Shaw this morning, and recognizing many people who've been involved. But, Mr. Wright, I want you to tell us what your daily routine usually is in trying to help the people of Los Angeles. Mr. Wright is with the Bureau of Sanitation. It is a key element of our success.
Basically, we maintain the sewer system and storm drain system for the city of L.A. We can, we make sure that the trash and sewage does not reach the waterways such as the L.A. River and Ocean. We make sure that the sewage reaches wastewater treatment plants. So, we are very proud of what we do, and we are very honored. A lot of times, we're not seen because it's out of sight, out of mind, but we do, we really do appreciate it. Thank you.
Well, we're very proud of you, and all of your work. You sometimes are alone in the center of the street with just a big blue truck, or another truck there, trying to, as people come around. We also have the sewer line, but also the storm drain line. Is that correct, too?
Yes, that's correct. We also clean catch basins, stormwater structures, to make sure that the water runoff does not get to the L.A. River and the Ocean.
And at the same time, when you do this here, you have these grates sometimes that try to keep stuff?
Item seven through twenty, several of the items have already been acted on, seven, eleven, and sixteen. There's a commissioner on item number eight. Do you wish to hold that on the desk?
All right, why don't Mr. Rosendahl, I had his hand up. Mr. Rosendahl and Mr. Corretts?
I believe Mr. Rosendahl wanted to call nineteen special.
All right, and then Mr. Corretts?
I'd like to call item seventeen special.
All right. Nineteen and seventeen have been called special. Let's open the roll on the remaining items. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Next item.
Madam President, just for council's information, the ordinances on nine and ten will go over for one week, and that will be October 28th.
All right.
Next items are items for which public hearings have not been held, items twenty-one through thirty-five. Ten votes are required for consideration on those, and there are cards on twenty-one, twenty-three, thirty-three, thirty-four, and thirty-five, I believe you wanted to call special.
Yes, all right. Let's open the roll on the remainder of the items.
Hold on, Ms. Perry.
Yes, okay, sorry.
Item twenty-four.
Okay, Mr. Cardenas calls item twenty-four special. Any other specials, Mr. Parks?
I didn't hear the comment on thirty-three and thirty-four.
There were cards on those.
I understand there's circulating many motions on both.
And then those can be held, and on thirty-four, there is an amendment, is it on one of the special events?
All right, any other specials members? All right, do we have any items remaining to be voted on in that? You want to open the roll on remaining items? If there are any? Okay, great. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Next item, Madam President, is item number thirty-six. That's closed session. Would you like to hold that matter on the desk?
Yes, please.
And then that would also go to the continuation agenda, which is item number thirty-seven, and there are cards on that. Do you wish to call that one special?
That'll be called special.
And that would take council back to the items called special and public comment.
Um, one, yeah, one correction I wanted to, I forgot to call item thirty-two special.
Would you like to reconsider that, so that can be held on the desk?
Yes. And then I just want to move it with the CIO report. And if we can, do I need to get out of the chair for that?
I'm sorry, Madam President, did you want to reconsider that one, because it's already been voted on, so?
Yeah, just move it with the CIO report. That's without?
Yeah, then do you want to reconsider that, so then you can make that motion?
Yeah, you want to vote on the reconsideration, close, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
And then my request is to just move it with the CIO report.
Okay. And then, would you like to just vote on that right now, then?
Sure. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Thank you. All right, so we will go back to public comment. We've gone through the entire agenda now?
Yes, Madam President, you have.
All right, before we go into public comment, we have a very quick presentation from the Bureau of Sanitation, so I'd like to ask the Bureau of Sanitation to go to the table, and if Mr. Zine can take over here for, yeah, we'll do thirty-five out of order, so they can go back to work, and if Mr. Zine can take the chair. Mr. Zine, if you can come take the chair, please, for a second.
Thank you, you're proudly wearing orange shirts today, and Ms. Perry, you can talk about the orange shirts, proudly displayed.
Thank you very much. And thank you to Mr. Zaldivar from the Bureau of Sanitation for coming to the table. He's going to say just a few words, and then we will go back to public comment. The city has implemented many programs to properly manage its wastewater collection system, which is a very critical component of our city's infrastructure. In 2004, the city entered into a ten-year agreement with various government and community groups, where the city committed to reducing sewer spills through sewer cleaning, inspection, renewal, and installation of air treatment facilities. The city has met and has many times exceeded all requirements set forth during the first five years of the settlement agreement, so I'd like to ask Mr. Zaldivar to say a few words about the accomplishments of the Bureau and the accomplishments that they have made in the area of wastewater, and I would like to say in advance, congratulations, and I'll say in advance, I hope you'll all give us an eye vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Perry, Enrique Zaldivar, the Director of the Bureau of Sanitation. We couldn't be any prouder of the work that our workers have accomplished. We couldn't be any prouder of the leadership that you have brought to us in this body, the council. You have given us the leadership to be able to have made the investments over the years. Think about the numbers that Councilmember Perry mentioned, seventy-seven percent reduction in spills. That is a number that is historically low, seven-hundred-and-fifty back in five years ago, to now a low of a hundred-and-fifty. The incidence, where it may have been commonplace to walk anywhere in the city and come across a sewer spill response crew. We want to make that site a rare sight in the city, and we have gotten there with a seventy-seven percent reduction. Now, while we still have a hundred-and-fifty, or a hundred-and-fifty-nine roughly occurring in a given year, our trend continues to be pointing downward, so we hope to be able to get this down to as close to zero as possible. Now, this is also a historic celebration, in that this was a win-win settlement agreement with the regulators, in this case, federal EPA, the Regional Water Quality Control Board, which, through your policy and the policy of the mayor, is that we always look for a way to make these a win-win types of partnerships, not always a contentious litigation kind of relationship. And so, we have also learned through this settlement agreement on how to best deal with the regulators, making it a win-win, and ultimately, the environment and our communities win. So, I want to thank you, and we appreciate you wearing the orange shirts. That's our way of telling you, and through our workers, how much we appreciate your leadership, and you honor us by wearing it and declaring today the Wastewater Worker Day. Thank you, council.
Very good, thank you. Councilmember Labonge, Mr. Labonge?
First of all, all the wastewater water workers stand up and be recognized by the council. Give them a big hand. Thank you, Ms. Perry, for your leadership on this. We were in the rotunda with Commissioner Shaw this morning, and recognizing many people who've been involved. But Mr. Wright, I want you to tell us what your daily routine usually is in trying to help the people of Los Angeles. Mr. Wright is with the Bureau of Sanitation. It is a key element of our success.
Basically, we maintain the sewer system and storm drain systems for the city of L.A. We can, we make sure that the trash and sewage does not reach the waterways such as the L.A. River and Ocean. We make sure that the sewage reaches wastewater treatment plants. So, we are very proud of what we do, and we are very honored. A lot of times, we're not seen because it's out of sight, out of mind, but we do, we really do appreciate it. Thank you.
Well, we're very proud of you and all of your work. You sometimes are alone in the center of the street with just a big blue truck or another truck there, trying to, as people come around. We also have the sewer line, but also the storm drain line. Is that correct, too?
Yes, that's correct. We also clean catch basins, stormwater structures, to make sure that the water runoff does not get to the L.A. River and the Ocean.
And at the same time, when you do this here, you have these grates sometimes that try to keep stuff out of the system, but sometimes they create a lot. You notice we need to make some corrections there at those grates.
Yes, we have management that is working really hard with engineering and taking care of those things.
Thank you very much, Mr. Wright. I appreciate what you do when you're on at Doris' yard, Doris Place yard.
That's correct, Doris Place, yes.
Right, right. You know who grew up on Doris Place?
No.
You ever see the movie Grease?
Yes.
Remember Cha Cha and Grease? She was in the L.A. River and started that big race. She grew up on Doris Place. Little small information that you're never going to need, but Doris Place is a historic spot. Hey, Mr. Westhoff, for a moment, please, I got thirty-five seconds. Chris, get up here, he's our city attorney through three administrations. Give Chris a hand for handling this. Chris, thank you. Just briefly, Chris, the struggle and the success.
Well, again, it was six years of litigation, and without the support of the city council and my own office, and obviously, the incredible people, men and women who work in the Bureau of Sanitation, we would not have been able in the last five years to accomplish what they have accomplished. And as I pointed out at the ceremony this morning, the hardest thing in the negotiation was trying to convince EPA and justice and the other citizen plaintiffs that if they gave the city of Los Angeles a chance, that its men and women could achieve what we have obviously demonstrated over the last five years that we could achieve. It is really a testament to, if you give people an opportunity to excel in this city, they will choose to excel, and the men and women who do the work in the field have certainly demonstrated that in what we've accomplished. And I'm proud to obviously have been representing Public Works for the last twenty-seven years, and they are an incredible, it's easy to be their lawyer when they always want to do the right thing, and they make my job very easy from that standpoint.
Thank you very much, Madam President, and thank you. The only thing I'd like to see in the future is move the street cleaners over to the Bureau of Sanitation, so together, clean gutters, clean streets, clean drains. Thank you.
Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Councilmember Perry. I wanted to just rise and voice my support and gratitude for your hard work. I know Councilmember Perry and Councilmember Garcetti played a big role in getting our proposition O funds passed, and with that, to see the level of creativity and engineering that's come from the leadership of Enrique Zaldivar and Hadel Hajkalil, I want to make sure I pronounce that correctly.
You got it right.
As well as Chris Westhoff, our city attorney, and all the folks who are the unsung heroes that every day you drive through our neighborhoods, you actually pick up the debris and trash, intercept it before it gets to the river, and I got to tell you, there's been many occasions in which we've been recognized for the River Master Plan, it's received many awards, but it's most recognized because of how we're going to be taking care of our ocean, our beaches, because all the trash we catch upstream prevent debris in the urban stop we're getting to our ecosystems along the ocean. So, we look at our neighborhoods, our streets, the impact they're making is tremendous, with the Department of Water and Power funding the Master Plan, your implementation of it, it's music to me, Mr. Wright, did you see, and here you talk about the river, it talks about a culture that's shifting and changing. Speaking of history, my first city job was at Doris Place, and I was about fifteen years old. It was the NYC CYO program. Back then, we had programs in which youngsters can get a job, and so I got to walk from Cypress Park into Lysian Valley and actually get introduced to how the city operates. I thought we were cleaning alleyways. In my life, I always thought they were alleys, but at the end, they told me, no, these are waterways. These are storm drains. These are areas that are supposed to allow the water to run through our neighborhoods, and all my life, I thought they were alleys. So, the role we play is critical. I'm hoping that people are listening, help the city out, put the trash where it should go, recycle your products, let's keep the plastic and all the polystyrene products out of the river, it'll make a big difference for our future. Thank you very much, and again, congratulations, you deserve this day. Congratulations, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Mr. Rosendahl?
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you for your leadership on this issue, frankly. It wouldn't have happened without your leadership. You know, I represent the coastal district, the eleventh district. We have the beautiful ocean, and whatever happens ends up in the ocean, and the cleaner that water obviously is, the better the ocean is. And over the last few years, with Measure O and with the leadership around the table here, you have made a huge difference in the water quality. It's a great honor to wear this and respect you all for what you do to make our environment clean and get us all ready for where we need to go to make the world a better place. Tell you a little quick story, you know, sometimes people think, well, maybe you're lifting the garbage or the this or the that. One day, I was working for Bobby Kennedy, you know, and I was a young kid, and I was full of energy and everything, and one of the big shots said to me, Rosendahl, never get too big that you can't empty the garbage can yourself. And every time I bring my garbage out, or every time I'm doing recycling, every time I'm trying to make the water clean, I think of that story, that we all owe a great lot of respect to everybody in the orange for what you're doing. God bless you all. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, and congratulations to all of you who are assembled here at the center table. Thank you for your great work, and we truly, truly appreciate what you do. It's a wonderful department. And with that, oh, Mr. Zine.
Thank you, is it working? Thank you, thank you, Madam President. I just also want to acknowledge, as I drove in, I saw those big trucks outside, and I've stopped a few times when I've seen folks working, those big vacuum trucks, they take that big hose and they clean out those pipes to make sure that it flows into the sewer. People don't know what you folks do to keep the underground of Los Angeles, the sewer lines, the pollution lines, how you keep them clear. And when you see those big trucks running around, and you'll stop in the middle of the street, and I've seen them at daytime and nighttime and all kinds of times, I think you folks maybe work twenty-four hours a day, that's part of that infrastructure of the city of Los Angeles that the average person knows nothing about. But I want to acknowledge all of you. I have stopped, I have introduced myself, I've seen how the operation goes, and it's obviously not a real clean job, but it's a necessary job to keep L.A. moving. I remember one time, we were at a location, and I saw all these suds going by, I said, what are those suds? He says, see that laundromat across the street? That's where the suds are coming by, it goes down that drain. So, to all of you, thank you for what you do, thank you for the orange shirts. This will be great for Halloween, we'll go out there, we'll look like pumpkins, but that's okay, the people won't be running us over. God bless you and keep up the good work. Thank you all.
Thank you very much. And with that, Madam Clerk, I think we need to take a roll, a vote on this. Open the roll, close the roll, and then tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Thank you again. Yes. All right, and then, I just want to remind everyone, we are at risk of losing a quorum at noon today. We have fifteen public comment cards, and we have a number of items on the agenda. I will try to go through public comment now, and then go through the agenda next. In order for us to get through all of the items that we have to get through today, and make sure that everyone has the opportunity to speak, I am going to limit our public comment to one minute per person, and for those of you who may need translation assistance, I'll put the translator on notice now in case she needs to get up there. And I'm going to call people four at a time. First speaker is Dr. Clyde Williams, followed by Arnold Sacks. So, Mr. Sacks, if you can make your way up here now, please. Oscar Johnson and Edith Suniga. Edith Suniga. I don't see Mr. Sacks in here. If you want to come up now, Mr. Sacks, otherwise I'll put someone ahead of you. Okay, Dr. Williams.
Dr. Clyde Williams, 4115 Barrett Road, El Sereno, Northeast L.A. The collection, and Bureau of Sanitation does a great job, except for one thing, it's called the Biona Creek Implementation Plan for Bacterial Total Maximum Daily Loads. The Board of Public Works, they approved it, and I am waiting to get the information that's supposed to be the basis for their informed decision. However, no appendices have been provided for the implementation plan, and thereby, it's deficient, incorrect, and appears to be erroneous, and also, it may cost us over $700 million for capital, and more than $40 million for operations and maintenance a year. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Mr. Sacks is our next speaker.
How great that the public suffers again while you blowhards are allowed to yap. By the way, with your orange shirts on, will you now be available for honorary furlough as your honorary employee is for the Public Works Department? Can we consider the council for honorary furlough days, like you have to help balance the city's budget? What is it, a $400 million deficit? Again, I'd like to reference the conversations regarding the six arenas and ludicrous policy and the amount of time it took to address the fact that the public was not being reimbursed for the public work, for the safety department's works at those six arenas while the Titanic was sinking in the water. And now you're going to look at?
Thank you very much. Oscar, you're our next speaker, followed by Edith Suniga. No, Edith, you're, despite the Oscar, okay, Oscar.
My name is Oscar Johnson. I'm proactive, I speak for the oppressed, and I speak for culture change. We'd like to thank God for President Barack Obama. We have a leader today that's going in the right direction, and any elected official who do not support President Barack Obama should be moved, should be removed from their position. President Barack Obama said on BET, the Black Entertainment Network, after he was elected, he said, "I'm going to remove all immigrants out of the black, that have business in the black community out, and I'm going to return the black community back to the black people." Several, eight months later, President Barack Obama said, "No more health care for illegal immigration." We need, end health care, and we need to end nursing abuse, and the nursing home abuse, we need to end the foster care abuse. We need to prosecute policemen and deputies that shoot unarmed people. We have too much power in the hands of criminals, we have too much authority in the hands of criminals. Policeman chief tells his policeman to kill, they kill. Chief Bart tells his deputy to kill, they kill, no conscience. One minute is not long enough.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Edith Suniga, and following Edith Suniga will be Felix Contreras, Renee Moreno, Caridad. I can't read your writing, okay, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Buenos dias, mi nombre, buenos dias, señores concejales, mi nombre es Edith Suniga, soy vendedora ambulante de Boyle Heights, y estoy aquí presente para pedirle a ustedes concejales que nos, que apoyen al señor, al señor concejal Wizard para un programa piloto, o si nos pueden ayudar para ganar un lugar donde podamos vender legalmente y no ser molestados por la policía. No somos personas criminales, somos personas trabajadoras y honradas. Muchas gracias.
Good morning, council members. My name is Edith Suniga. I am a street vendor in Boyle Heights, and I am here to ask you to help us and to support us, to support a council member Wizard for a pilot program, and also, to see if you can help us to find a place where we can legally sell, and in order to avoid being bothered by the police. We are not criminals, we are hardworking and honest people.
Thank you. Felix Contreras.
Buenos dias, mi nombre es Felix Contreras.
Good morning, my name is Felix Contreras.
Soy vendedora ambulante de Boyle Heights.
I'm a street vendor in Boyle Heights.
En la calle Breed y la avenida Cesar Chavez.
On Breed Street and Cesar Chavez.
Por estos últimos días, no nos han dejado vender, en la estación de policía.
Perdón, estos últimos días, ¿qué?
No nos han dejado vender.
These last days, they didn't allow to sell, they didn't allow us to sell.
No somos, no somos problemas para la comunidad.
We are not a problem for the community.
Se vive un ambiente bonito entre la comunidad de Boyle Heights y...
We have a nice environment in the community of Boyle Heights.
No queremos ser cargas para el gobierno.
We don't want to be a burden for the government.
Queremos su apoyo para un programa piloto.
And we want your support for a pilot program.
Apoyado por el concejal José Wizard.
We want the support of council member José Wizard.
En el cual quiere legalizar la venta de ambulantes en un lote.
In which we can do our vending in a lot.
Les pedimos que los apoyen en este programa piloto.
What's for your support?
Gracias por su atención y interés.
Thank you for your attention.
Thank you very much. Renee Moreno, Caridad, I can't read, and Armenia Garcia, and Humberto Altamirano. Okay.
Buenos dias, señores, mi nombre es Renee Moreno.
Good morning, my name is Renee Moreno.
Tengo año y medio de desempleo.
I've been unemployed for a year and a half.
Y yo le mantengo a mis hijos.
I support my children.
Vendiendo comida caliente.
And I sell warm food.
En Cesar Chavez, Breed.
At Cesar Chavez and Breed.
Quisiera que nos apoyaran para un mercado de comida caliente.
We would like us to give us support for a fresh food market.
Ya que también es parte de nuestra cultura.
This is part of our culture.
Y siempre andamos con el temor de que la policía nos, nos está moviendo, y hemos tenido pérdidas. En estos dos meses, hemos tenido pérdidas porque la policía no estaba moviendo.
We are always afraid that the police keep moving us around, because in these last months, we lost money because of the police moving us around.
Y es muy duro mantener...
And nowadays, it's very hard to support your children like that.
Thank you. Caridad.
Mi nombre es Caridad Vázquez.
My name is Caridad Vázquez.
Soy vendedora de Boyle Heights.
I am a street vendor at Boyle Heights.
Como a deber, nosotros tenemos casi quince a veinte años vendiendo.
As you can see, we've been selling for the last fifteen, twenty years.
Y este, no cambiamos tenido problemas en esta, en esta comunidad.
We never had problems in the community.
Hasta ahora, estos últimos días, hemos tenido problemas y hemos tenido acoso de la policía.
Just lately, we had, we had some problems, and we have been, we were harassed by the police.
Sabemos que todo lo que hacemos es ilegalmente, ilegalmente.
We know that whatever we do is illegal.
Pero desgraciadamente, somos, la mayoría somos gente mayores y no tenemos trabajo.
But unfortunately, we are, you know, adults, we are adults, and we don't have work.
Y eso es lo que nos sostiene.
And that supports us.
Queremos, queremos que nos apoye y que apoyen al señor José Wizard, nuestro concejal.
We need your support, and we need you to support our council member, José Wizard.
Al programa piloto.
For a pilot program. Thank you.
Armenia.
Buenos dias. Buenos dias, mi nombre es Armenia Garcia, soy vendedora ambulante de Boyle Heights. De un tiempo para que hemos tenido muchos problemas con la policía, y los invitamos a que nos apoyen en un programa piloto, un espacio donde podamos vender legalmente.
Good morning, my name is Armenia Garcia, I'm a street vendor in Boyle Heights, and lately, we've been having problems. They don't allow us to sell our, our food in the street, and we need a place where we can sell it. We invite you to give us support, to have a pilot program in a lot, in a place where we can have a space to work and to be able to support our families. Thank you.
Humberto Altamirano, Rodolfo Vilches, Sal Martinez, and Janet Favela. Humberto.
Sí, muy buenos dias a todos, señores concejales, mi nombre es Humberto Altamirano, de nuevo.
Good morning to all council members, my name is Roberto Altamirano.
Dia de hoy estamos aquí junto con mis compañeros pidiéndoles a ustedes un apoyo.
We are here today with my coworkers, requesting your support.
Ya que con mis compañeros, yo también soy vendedora ambulante de Boyle Heights.
I am a street vendor at Boyle Heights.
Estamos aquí nuevamente, como le repito, un apoyo de ustedes, ya que de eso depende, pues, nuestra economía, nuestro futuro.
We are here to ask for your support, because our economy and our future depends on this.
Desafortunadamente, hemos sido obligados a tomar, pues, esa actividad en la calle.
Unfortunately, we've been forced to take this kind of activity, to be street vendors.
Ya que el trabajo es muy escaso, la crisis y la economía.
Because due to the crisis and economy, the jobs are very scarce.
Ya es la única manera o recurso que tenemos de llevar el sustento a nuestros hijos.
This is the only way or resource that we have to provide food and support our children.
Y principalmente el estudio.
And mainly, their studies.
Consideramos su apoyo y esperamos una respuesta positiva. Gracias.
We need your support, and we hope for a positive answer. Thank you.
Thank you. Rodolfo.
Muy buenos dias a todos los presentes. Mi nombre es Rodolfo Vilches, y formo parte del grupo de vendedores de alimentos de la comunidad de Boyle Heights, y les pido de la manera más atenta, escuchen mi petición, pues solo pido que apoyen el programa piloto, ya que dicho programa se refiere a la venta de alimentos ambulantes, por lo cual... de alimentos ambulantes, por lo cual no puedo llevar a cabo, ya que últimamente la policía nos va a mover casi todos los días, y no podemos vender nuestros alimentos, por lo cual arroja puras pérdidas económicas, ya que es nuestro sustento para sobrevivir y mantener nuestras familias. Asimismo, junto con mis compañeros, pedimos que nos ayuden a encontrar la solución, pues queremos trabajar legalmente y estamos dispuestos a cooperar económicamente si es necesario. Y por último, entre manos, gracias y espero contar con su apoyo.
Good morning. My name is Rodolfo Vilches, and I am part of the street vendors that sells food in the community of Boyle Heights. And I ask you to please listen to my petition. I just ask you to support us in this pilot program, because such a program is going to help the street vendors. And, you know, lately the police have been asking us to move to different places every day, and we cannot sell our food. And we are losing money, and this is how we support ourselves and our families. And together with my coworkers, we ask you to help us find a solution, because we want to work legally, and we are willing to collaborate economically if it's necessary. And I am, ahead of time, I am thanking you, and I hope to count with your support.
Thank you. Sal Martinez, and then Janet Favela.
Buenos dias, buenos dias, señores concejales y público general. Mi nombre es Saúl Martínez, y soy vendedor ambulante de la calle Breed y César Chávez. Vengo aquí a exponer el problema que tenemos como vendedores ambulantes. Somos acusados constantemente por la policía, y eso nos ha afectado nuestra economía, y nos ha afectado también psicológicamente. Y una solución que nos ayudaría mucho que ustedes como concejales apoyaran el proyecto del concejal José Wizard, un proyecto piloto para que tengamos un lugar en donde vender nuestros productos, y le estamos invitando a que apoye al dicho proyecto. Gracias.
Good morning, council members and public in general. My name is Saúl Martínez. I am a street vendor. I work at Breed and César Chávez, and I come here to just expose the problem that we have, and we are street vendors, and we are regularly accused by the police, and that, this has affected our economy. Psychologically, we need, this has affected us also psychologically, and we need a solution, and we hope that you can help us as council members and support the pilot project for us to be able to have a place where to sell our food. Thank you.
Janet.
Good morning. My name is Janet Favela. I'm an organizer for East L.A. Community Corporation. I've been working with the street vendors in Boyle Heights for almost two years. I'm here to support the street vendors and introducing themselves to you. These vendors have been working in Boyle Heights for up to 20 years. Vendors started organizing themselves as a result of enforcement efforts from the police department. While we understand that street vending is an issue, we are here to show you we want to be part of the solution. Vendors would like to continue to work with council member. We start to secure a space where they can bend legally, like an open-air evening market. Especially, now we should be supporting economic development opportunities with the problems with the economy. We would like your support so that we can achieve this, and we look forward to meeting with the council members very soon. Thank you.
Thank you. Daniel Wright, Mario Vallejo, Walter Bectel, and Paul Villarreal. Can you come on up?
Daniel Wright, 467 Crane Boulevard. On behalf of the Vandy Camps Coalition. Council members, yesterday you heard testimony from a number of members of the Vandy Camps Coalition regarding how the Board of Trustees of L.A. CCD transferred the Vandy Camps campus from L.A. City College, and how in turn the Vandy Camps Community College campus is being converted to new land uses of a charter high school and unemployment offices funded by the L.A. Mayor's Office. The campus was constructed with $62 million of state grants and voter-approved bonds for community college purposes. This site is no longer used for those purposes, and therefore it is subject to the MC2 zoning of the city of Los Angeles. The Alliance Charter High School occupying the first floor of the new educational building is operating without a conditional use permit as required by your zoning code. Yet another charter school in the same zone is applying for a CUP. We need even-handed enforcement of the zoning codes of the city, otherwise they are meaningless. Thank you for your interest in this issue.
Mario Vallejo. Is Mario Vallejo present? Mario Vallejo.
Sí, mi nombre es Mario Vallejo. Y soy de los vendedores ambulantes de la calle-
My name is Mario Vallejo, and I'm a street vendor.
At Breed. La calle Breed.
At Breed Street.
Venimos a, nos apoyan los señores concejales.
We're coming here for the support of the council members.
Con piloto, claro.
With this pilot project.
Y salgamos adelante porque nuestra comida es tradicional.
But in our community, this is something traditional.
Y esperemos que, pues así sea, y los apoye mucho.
Yeah, and we hope that this happens, and we hope for your support.
Esperemos que también haya un recurso también para, pues sí, para seguir adelante y-
We hope to find some kind of resource for us to be able to continue.
Que es nuestro sustento para nuestra familia.
Because this is the way that we support our families. And that's all. Thanks.
Next speaker is Walter Bectel, followed by Paul Villarreal.
Good morning. Thank you. I wanted to say something about the Police Commission, supposed public comment meeting that was supposed to be held this morning. Nobody in the community, not just including myself, were informed of that. I try to stay abreast of what's going to happen. Nothing in the newspapers was announced, nothing on the radio, and I always listen to the radio every morning. It wasn't until after the meeting this morning was held did they tell us on KNX that there was a meeting today. I don't think that's a very good idea to make sure that nobody can attend this meeting. They also said that nobody made any public comment. We can't make public comment if you don't make a public announcement that there's going to be a meeting in that regard. So with that in mind, I'd like to say I hope that the city council does not see to the appointment of Assistant Chief McDonald. During the 90s, he had illegal access to illegal wiretapping. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Paul Villarreal.
Hello, my name's Paul Villarreal. I just wanted to extend my appreciation and gratitude for all council members for coming together and really working hard to bring solutions to our city. I know it's not easy, and you sacrifice a lot to do what you do. I'm a Cathedral High School alumni member. I wanted to share with you that I believe that Los Angeles is a very powerful city, a powerful brand, and with the right team, mastermind group, we can attract resources, tools, employment opportunities for all who are seeking opportunity to support their family. I do represent also the vendors here in a sense, and I understand that they are in need of opportunities to be able to support their family in terms of employment. So I spoke with Ed Reyes earlier, and I'm willing to support the Community Development Department to bring jobs to the city of Los Angeles.
Yes, Mr. Cardenas.
Madam President, did this gentleman just compliment the city council?
That sounds like it.
I just wanted to make sure I heard that. Thank you. Thank you very much. Really appreciate it.
Now we go to Van Nuys for Bruce Darian.
Yes, Council President, I believe an apology to all of the speakers this morning that did not get over a minute, or those of us that are not going to speak over a minute, being as that you let speakers, you stopped the clock at 28 seconds, you started the clock over again, and you let an interpreter take over a minute. It wasn't our doing to come here and ask that it be spoken a foreign language and then interpreted in English. We are similarly situated as speakers, and our rights under the 14th Amendment are violated in that you are giving separate treatment to those of us that are speaking here. It will not be tolerated. We will investigate this and see what our remedies are. As far as your sanitation thing, if you said, if you covered each storm drain, which each of your thank yous this morning, you would safeguard the ocean in a far better way. That $300,000 truck with a stinger on it that goes from storm drain to storm drain to pull the trash out that's able to get past it because you won't cover it would save millions of dollars if you'd get the job done.
Thank you very much. Back to City Hall. Mr. Reyes, I believe you wanted your item so that we could do this before you are excused.
Thank you, Madam President. Colleagues, I was hoping we could take the item out of order to address the ordinance that has been circulated and is in front of you. It is 37D.
37D.
That essentially reverts the fees in that particular section that was of discussion yesterday to the way they once were established. It does not increase them, and I'd like to affirm amendment to have the Planning Department and Building and Safety respond in 30 days with recommended changes after each one of your offices have been able to understand and look into what these fees mean for your constituents and the various interest groups that you are concerned with. So that being said, I'd like to move 37D.
Before we do that, sir, we do have a number of cards here. The attorney has advised me that we must allow them to speak, and so I recommend that we give them one minute each, and I will call them up in groups of four. Dr. Clyde Williams, Daniel Wright. Is Daniel Wright here? Okay, Daniel Wright. Marian Dodge, are you here? Marian Dodge. And Deborah Willis. Is Deborah Willis here? Okay, great. Go ahead, Dr. Williams.
Dr. Clyde Williams, El Sereno, Northeast L.A. Wow, we actually agree on something finally. One of the many opportunities. Why? Because a lot of people appealed what was going on. A lot of people petitioned. A lot of people asked, "Hey, let's do it right this time," because it hasn't been done right before. The whole basis for informed consent and the right to petition is fundamental to even this small $89 versus $74. Thank you very much.
Daniel Wright, you're next. Following Daniel Wright will be Marian Dodge, and following Marian Dodge will be Deborah Willis.
Daniel Wright, 467 Crane Boulevard. Council members, the many community-based organizations had their voices heard yesterday, and thank you for your response. Every community group that I talked to here in council or online confirmed that they were never notified by the Planning Department that planning appeal fee changes were under consideration. Your proposals yesterday to put the current appeal fees back and require a more open discretion of fees is therefore the right thing to do. I am, however, not optimistic that it will take only 30 days to provide a credible outreach, including time for your neighborhood councils to agendize and consider their positions. Therefore, I urge you to place no sunset on this ordinance, but rather amend it and then come back and amend it when the full input process is complete. If time allowed, I was going to talk about building and safety appeals in the process and impact on individuals, but my time is out. Thank you.
Marian Dodge, and then Deborah Willis.
Good morning, council members. My name is Marian Dodge. I'm past president of Los Feliz Improvement Association. Our board has not taken a position, so I'm speaking as an individual. Yesterday, Councilman Labonge stated the need for public participation in good government. I hope he will keep his comments in mind as you address the issue of fee increases. And Councilman Reyes expressed his desire for transparency. I hope you will keep that in mind as well. But transparency needs to occur at the beginning of the process, not at the end. I would suggest that in the future, the notification go directly to community groups. The Planning Department, for example, could have sent a letter to groups who had filed an appeal in the last five years. The letter could have said, "Changes are being proposed," and give a link to the report. Because you've filed appeals in the past, the fee changes on page eight might affect you. You may follow the activity on this file by contacting so-and-so. Council staff, council office staff who meet regularly with community groups should have alerted them to the proposed changes. These simple acts would go a long way towards establishing trust in the city government system.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker.
I'm Deborah Willis. I'm the president of the St. Andrews Square Neighborhood Association. We feel we are definitely, there's an impact on us in our neighborhood by the rise in fees, appeal fees for the Department of City Planning, and we'd like to take the opportunity to say so. And I'd like to also support what I think Councilmember Reyes was about to propose, to roll the fees back and send the whole thing back to the Department of City Planning to come up with a more equitable fee structure. Thanks.
Thank you. The next four speakers will be Doug Haynes. Doug Haynes, are you here? Come on up. Scott Diamond, are you here? Scott Diamond. And Barbara Brody, or Barbara Broady. And then our last speaker will be Tracy Chavira.
Hi, my name's Doug Haynes. I'm with the East Hollywood Neighborhood Council. It's somewhat difficult to comment on ordinance that hasn't been made available for public review. Just to note that I believe that both the public and many of the council members really expressed yesterday their belief that keeping the fees very low is important for the constituents of this city, not only for official organizations, but for all individuals, so that concerns that we have, that we need to express to you, can be heard by you. And I hope that you'll keep that in consideration, and that there will not be a sunset clause on this, and that we will be able to thoroughly go for this. I believe that appeal fees should be reasonable, that a certain dollar amount should be equitable for all, but I don't believe that it should be punitive so that people cannot appeal and cannot be heard. Thank you very much.
Scott Diamond.
Good morning, council members. I'm Scott Diamond. I'm president of the Beverlywood Homeowners Association, 1,355 homes in West L.A. I'm a little bit confused because they're going up, they're going back down, so I'm not really sure where they are at this standpoint, but I can give you the fact that I have my own job, my homeowners have their own jobs. For us to come through the appeals process, and we come here on a regular basis to talk to you about different projects going on that affect our neighborhood, is a sacrifice in itself, and we believe that reasonable fees and the fees where they have been is effective in the current standpoint, and we'd like to continue it with the current structure as it's been. Thank you.
Barbara Broady.
Thank you. My name is Barbara Broady. I'm president of Westwood South of Santa Monica Boulevard Homeowners Association. I would like to say that a citizen or a community's ability to appeal a land use decision before the city should not be based upon that community's ability to pay. This is not appropriate. We support reworking the originally proposed ordinance, sending it back, allowing nonprofits, community organizations to have exemptions from high fees or the possibility of those fees. It is disenfranchising for the community. I might also add that filing an appeal is a gut-wrenching experience for most community organizations. We don't like doing it, we don't want to do it, and if the city revised the community plans and actually took the role of doing environmental impact reports seriously, where the developers didn't hire the consultants who developed those documents, and they were truly an analysis, we wouldn't be filing a fraction of the appeals that we have to file now. So it's a symptom of a greater problem. We appreciate the motions to revise the ordinance, and we hope that they will be done. Thank you.
And our final speaker, Tracy Chavira.
Good morning, Tracy Chavira, Central City Association. I'm here today to ask for fairness. CCA supports the current version of the Planning Department fee ordinance as approved by the city council on August 12. In coming up with the fee structure, the Planning Department conducted an extensive fee study report to determine the actual cost of processing entitlements. Based upon the recommendation in this study, planning recommended, and this council approved, a fee structure for appeals that is fair. These new fees have been, have not even gone into effect, and you're looking to make drastic changes. CCA urges the city council to leave this appeal fee structure in place, and if necessary, review the fee structure within one year after the implementation date of the fee ordinance. review the fee structure within one year after the implementation date of the fee ordinance. Thank you for your consideration.
All right, Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Madam President. Just to be emphatic and clear, there is no sunset on this. This sends back the fees to the way they were. They revert back, so letter D on the agenda, 37D, would allow us for that. This actually will revert our fees to the original fee schedule by reverting back to the original fees. This will give the council time to study how much the city subsidizes appeal cases. So we've been instructing the Planning Department and Building and Safety, along with CIO, to report back to PLUM on the analysis of full cost recovery. I know what staff must be frustrated. We did a whole study, we've been doing this since April, but I really think it's important to take this initial, this next step and fold in all your concerns to make sure it's very clear where everyone's stance and to have the kind of feedback that's needed from our constituents. So that being said, I'd ask for an eye vote on 37D, and there is no sunset. My goal is 30 days. That's my goal. If we need 60 days, so be it, but I'm really going to be looking to your leadership, council members, to tell me what issues, conditions need to be addressed to make sure you have the accessibility that makes it comfortable so we can have a process that minimizes those who would appeal frivolously. I'll be asking for a study from the Planning Department and the trends that exist to see if folks are making this a cottage industry, are actually making money off of these appeals, and those will be frivolous appeals. But again, that's to be seen in the future. So thank you very much.
Mr. Reyes, I would ask you to press your button for the second time so you can close. There are four speakers on the queue. Mr. Rosendahl is next.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Mr. Reyes, for your leadership. We had a long, two-, three-hour discussion about this yesterday. Couple of bottom lines. I'm on the Budget Committee, and full cost recovery is a reality of the budget crisis. We're in a crisis. We have to find ways to close the budget. We cannot have the general fund subsidizing any more anything when we don't have enough money just to run the city. We are in a very serious financial crisis. Saying that, I'm a big believer in community groups having the opportunity to interact with whatever development project there is. I had folks here, the Frankels especially, from Mountain Gate, they came down and they spoke, and Alan Schwartz and others yesterday, to point out that developers shouldn't get advantages over community groups, and of course, that should never be the case. But at the same time, when a community group decides they want to file an appeal on something, first of all, they should be as close to where that project is and as familiar with it as possible, not just ambulance chasers, which some folks have become that, who don't even live near where projects are. And secondly, the community groups, when they do an appeal, have to appreciate the real costs and what that appeal costs the city. And how we come up to the right numbers and figures will be the creative art, because no way do I want to stop community groups from having input and making decisions. I frankly, been in office a little over four years, and my district is always hot because it's the ocean. Everybody wants to still build there. But I tell every developer, "Come to me last. Go to the neighborhood council, go to the homeowners groups, go to the chamber, go to the people in the block and in the neighborhood, and then come to me." And if they have built a consensus and a coalition of support, they can get my support. I don't think we need to disincentivize our constituents. We need to empower them. They are my key support, but this is a tough financial situation. So this 30 days gives everybody an opportunity to bring in groups and see how we can function properly so that the appeal process can be genuine and real and reflect the community. So it's a work in progress, and I thank you for your leadership, Ed, and especially this motion that allows a little breathing period. I say to every community group, "Sit down, look at the numbers, look at the projects, and see where we can find a medium that works for all of us." Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm sorry I wasn't here yesterday for the debate. I think it was important to reiterate a few things that were brought up in committee, and I'd ask if the Planning Department would come forward for just a moment. I want to ask a couple of questions. Mr. Rosendahl, while they come forward, Mr. Rosendahl is actually right. We have a considerable financial concern, and as you all know, you've been sitting through the meetings, you know the cost factors involved in this. What I don't think you realize is that there's abuses going on in the system. Can you tell me what does it cost to do an average appeal process on a zone case?
Good morning. Eva Yohan-McDonald, City Planning. Glad to see everybody again. Councilmen, so are you asking how much it's costing to process an appeal?
Yeah.
To process appeal to the planning decision made by the Planning Department, when they appeal to a commission, it costs about $13,000.
$13,000 a staff cost?
Yes, because it's a very lengthy process. It requires noticing, it requires preparing an appeal report to the commission and prepping the commission and be there and all that. And a second level appeal, if a party decides to appeal to a council, it's a little less. It's about over $11,000, but it is very costly. And currently, it costs, by today's fiscal year, 2009, '10, fee structure, it's $89 to file an appeal, no matter where you are.
So we're subsidizing appeal processes to the tune of $12,900-plus on average? Each one?
Yes. And the Planning Department, after yesterday's hearing, did a rough estimate. We, based on, this is very rough, we're talking subsidy from the general fund somewhere around $3 million a year.
And Prop 13 allows by laws to collect up to the cost of providing the service, no matter what it is?
The state law allows us to recoup 100% of the cost.
Now, I'm not standing here saying, folks, we need to start charging $13,000. That is not the intent of what the Budget Committee was trying to accomplish, but rather to recognize the fact that we do subsidize those that have legitimate needs to make appeals. Those are the communities of interest, which are the neighbors, and in certain institutions that may be in the community that exist. And I think the discussion about, the lady had about our community association should have that right. I think it's always been endemic in the concept of allowing appeals. What has happened is, and I would like you to give me the information you have, is people are abusing the system as well. I know of people who go out throughout this city who have no specific interest whatsoever in certain cases, but appeal it because a certain developer is building it and they don't like the developer, so they're abusing the system, that they maybe have a special interest in reason why they want to oppose a project, to cost it money so it kills it. There are people doing that. Do you have specific, any specific knowledge or cases that you know of?
Well, council member, I do not know the exact name of the company, but I personally am aware of one case which was related to a student housing project in the city, that a competitor that is not operating in the city of LA was appealing with a cost of $89 or back then $74 and stopping a student housing project that was approved by the department.
Yeah, and I've seen that in my district. I think all of us have probably seen that in our districts where people that live five miles away from a project are fighting it, not necessarily because they have a specific interest, but because they're aligned with a group that fights against just development in general. And so I think what the committee wanted to see done here is that we raise fees for those people outside the obvious, and maybe the definition needs to be made of what is the obvious neighborhood of interest, the community of interest. What are the community of interests? Obviously, the neighbors within the 500-foot limit. Obviously, a community association that may abut that property, but not for an association that's 20 miles away or a company who's fighting another company. That's the abuse we must stop, and I'm glad that Mr. Reyes is willing to take that back and work on those issues. But folks, we can't afford to pay $13,000 for every one of these when people are abusing the system. We've got to take the abuse out of the system, and that's what was started in the Budget Finance Committee on this discussion. Secondly, we can't disenfranchise our community of interest. We've got to do that, but we have to recognize the fact that it's also clogging the system, that the easy access to appeal, which is being abused by some, is also clogging the Planning Department, a department that has lost 30% of its funding in the recent budget. How many people are, were you authorized in your department two years ago?
We were authorized 400 positions.
400 positions?
Yes.
No, all total?
Total.
For the whole department?
For our entire program.
Okay, and how many do you have right now?
We currently have two, about 290.
290. And declining?
Yes, and also I indicated yesterday, 80% of our staff is on furlough currently. That is, that equates to about 24 to 25, full-time equivalent. So we have to take that out of the 290.
Okay.
And with the early retirement proposal, you know, be passing maybe, we are taking a chance of maybe losing anywhere from 30 to 50, because we have a lot of employees qualified for ERIP if it's passed.
So a department that was authorized for 400 people a year and a half ago is down to less than 250, probably, actually.
Yes.
That is a system that is already on the verge of breaking, and I think Mr. Reyes has said very clearly, this is a department in real, real stress, and the economic situation of the city is making that stress worse, and if we are subsidizing the tune of $13,000, every one of these, and we're allowing people to abuse that system, we are foolhardy in thinking that we're going to keep our system going and that this department will continue to be successful in its mission of doing planning and thinking forward in the city of Los Angeles. So, folks, I think we need to go back to this. I guess we have to approve this today just to keep the money now going, but your committee is going to take this back up. We cannot be believing that you're going to fight for the rights of a few people when, in fact, you're really destroying the system doing that. You can't afford to do that. So let's be reasonable in how we do this, protect the system, and restrain it so that it's not abused. And that's what the committee asked for, and that's what I'm asking for today. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Alarcon.
Yes, members, yes, we did have a lively discussion yesterday, and I think it did produce a motion that will sort of create a stay in the discussion to give us a better sense to focus on the issue, because we obviously weren't focused on it when it came before us, and now that we have a chance to focus on it, hopefully we'll produce a better product. But I do want to make several comments. With regard to the use of the word subsidizing, we keep using that word, and yet who's subsidizing us if not the taxpayers? I mean, it seems to me that, it seems to me that that's exactly what taxpayer dollars are supposed to be used for. If you're going to have a planning process at all, it is going to include an appeal process, if it is going to be legal, then it should be subsidized. It should be paid for by the taxpayer dollars. So fundamentally, I have an issue with not providing that service as we provide police service, fire service. Now, some of these services, we do charge fees on, but it should be part of the service. It's part of the democratic process that we put in place. If we didn't believe that, the fees would have increased a long, long time ago. With regard to the fee increases, Mr. Smith, I just want to point out that those big companies that are filing these bogus claims, and I agree that that occurs, they're still going to pay the 500 bucks. That's not the problem. Their increase is only going from about $105 to $500. So these big companies, they're going to file for $500. It's not going, the only ones it's going to have a chilling effect on are the people that live more than 500 feet away, just the mom and pops, the individual homeowners. That's going to have a chilling effect on them. And, by the way, the neighborhood councils, who would have to pay instead of $100, will have to pay $500. They can do it if they can put it together of their own source. But in any case, it's going to have a chilling effect on the public's ability to appeal these cases. The primary concern I had yesterday was with regard to the fact that we did not increase developer fees. While we increased the appellate, the non-applicant fees, we didn't increase the developer fees. So if we really wanted to share the sacrifice here, we should have increased the developer fees. Now, yes, they're capped. In fact, if you look at the way that it was done, it's actually going to have the effect of reducing developer fees because there's a cap now imposed, and I don't have a problem with the cap if it's relative to cost recovery, but you didn't increase the percentage, the proportion, the 85%. If you want to increase the appeal fees, we ought to increase the developer fees. So I say that it should go to 90% as a base, so that more of the other developers will have to pay an increase, so that if we're going to increase the fees on the other appellants, then we should increase the fees on the developers as well, and we didn't do that. And that was a fundamental problem I had with it. Secondly, I had a problem with the building and safety fees. They went up from $368 to $6,100. That's a 2,000% increase. Now, I recognize there's only, in 2008, we only had nine appeals. We're only talking about $55,000 here, but still, that's a huge increase that I think we could do a better job. And in fact, the third product was actually better than the second and better than the first, but I think that we can do even better. Those fees, we should just not increase fees by 2,000% on anything without expecting to get an outcry from the public. So those are my concerns. When this comes back in 30 days or 60 days, or never, I hope that, number one, we do look at increasing the proportion of the applicant's fees that are paid. The developers should share the sacrifice as well. And then, number two, that we should lower the building and safety fees across the board, because as you go through the process to get to the end, you're still going to pay $6,000. And thirdly, I really think that we need to look at the $500, because it's not going to have an effect on the real big guys that are just doing it to throw mud in the face of their opponent developers, but it is going to have a chilling effect on the little people out there who want to file an appeal, because it will have an effect. And maybe, Mr. Reyes, one of the things we really need to look at is the 500 feet. Maybe down the road, we really need to take a look at whether we should expand that to 1,000 feet, because we know that the impacts of particularly larger projects is much greater than 500 feet, and we may want to look at that as we move forward. Anyway, those are my offerings. I do support the motion before us.
Thank you very much. Mr. Carrats, followed by Ms. Hahn, and then to close, Mr. Reyes.
Well, I think Mr. Rosendahl said much of what I wanted to say, which is, initially, we looked at this to cover the full costs of our department. I don't think we have that obligation, and as I said before, if we covered all of our full costs of everything we did, we'd have a $7 or $8 billion surplus. We're obviously not going to do that. In the areas where we need to, like this one, we need to look at a bigger factor, which is civic participation, whether we want people to actually have the ability to file appeals as a way to give us feedback on what we do in planning. So I like what we're doing. We're sending this back with our original rates of fees. We're going to take 30 days after that and look at what we think the fees should be, but one way or another, they should be very low so that people can continue to participate in the process. And I think we're doing the right thing here, and I'm happy this is going forward.
Ms. Hahn.
Thank you, Madam President. Well, I just wanted to rise again and just, again, listening to this conversation. I understand, you know, the situation we're in, but I think we would be very short-sighted to just take our current budget and our current status of some of these employees and not look long-term, because planning and land use decisions have long-term effects on communities and neighborhoods, and I think we can all look around the city before our time and see where there were some bad planning, there were some places where it's clear the community did not have a say, was not involved in the process. So I don't want to take our current budget crisis and devise a system that, as Richard said, will have a chilling effect on people actually staying involved in their communities, you know, appealing what they consider to be bad decisions. That's everybody's right, and it does seem like, for a long time, our system has seemed to favor developers and not the people who get impacted the most by some of these developments. So let's not use a short-term budget crisis mentality to in any way not deliver the kinds of services that I think we're obligated to do. It's all about land use. It's all about planning in this city, and the decisions we make affect people long-term. So I just wanted to say I like the direction we're going in. Yes, and you can comment on that.
Councilwoman, I would, I'd just like to address one point you brought up, that is the budget crisis in relation to the planning fee study. The comprehensive fee study actually was initiated about three years ago when our director, Ms. Gail Goldberg, arrived in the department. We spent about three months or so and developed a strategic plan for the department. That was the first one the department ever had. And one of the strategic points in our plan is to make the planning department self-sustainable department instead of 100% general fund dependable.
Let me just ask one, let me stop you and ask a question. There's been a lot of talk about people who abuse the system. There's been a lot of talk about people who abuse the system. How much abuse are we talking about of this appeals?
I do not have the, this.
What do you think? I mean, is it like major abuse of our system? Are there certain people or companies or developers that are literally, as we heard, tying it up?
The current code in relation to appeals definitely has no limitation in where you can be. We have people appealing cases they are in Sacramento. We have people appealing cases anywhere in the U.S. I don't have any data to give you the specifics today, but I can say that we appreciate having some time and actually the dialogue about.
Right.
The current code. I think we do need to look at.
But is that the majority, the majority of appeals?
It's not a majority, but definitely it's there, and it's there on a regular basis. And I think as a government agency, it's our responsibility to address that issue and make sure there is no abuse. I hear the community groups. I understand where they're coming from. And yes, it is a very costly system. What the planning department is trying to do is to get these cases done quickly if we have adequate resources. And the only way to have adequate resources is to have the money to pay for them. And so that was where we're coming from. But we do hear the communities, we hear the council members, and we understand. And we want to use the thirty days or however long, hopefully not too long, to address all these issues, abuses as one, the current code, and to tighten it as one. And we will come back with a good comprehensive strategy to address that. But I just wanted to say that our goal, end goal, is to have good plans so people don't have to go through the entitlement process for every little thing they need to do.
Right.
And that is a general fun function.
Right.
And if we want to have enough resources to do the long-range planning and have good plans, we need to address the case processing type and do it quickly.
Right, right. I agree, and I appreciate that. I was just reacting to some of the comments about current furloughs and the current crisis we're in right now.
Yeah.
We know there's a certain group of employees that don't have a contract.
Yeah, but we just.
So that's what I'm saying. I don't want us to make policy decisions based on that.
We fully understand that.
Right, but we want to make sure we take into account.
Yes.
What the community is saying. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And to close is Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Madam President. I wanted to ask you, is there, I'd like to give you the opportunity to respond to some of the assertions that were made and this notion that, or the suggestion that we're making it easier for developers and being punitive or creating this effect on the everyday citizen. Can you respond to that?
I.
Please hold my time.
Okay. Councilmember Alarcon mentioned that we should consider raising the eighty-five percent to maybe something higher, and we definitely will look into that. But I do want to bring up that planning cases or building and safety appeals are not always filed by developers. Anyone who filed a planning case is an applicant. That could be a homeowner, could be a store owner, could be a school, charter school, for example. So it's, it comes from all parts of L.A. So to say only developers benefit from the appeal fees being cut, that kind of only addresses one part of our stakeholder group, yeah. The appeals are done by, for example, building, mostly is the operator of a business, and sometimes, like the nine that we used in the oh-seven, oh-eight study, three of them actually were next-door neighbors. So there are many different ones. I just want to address that one point.
Okay. And to keep this on a positive note, yes, we did start in April. Yes, we had many, many hearings. Unfortunately, the way it was either written or noticed, the essence of what the actions were, were not realized. I want to move this forward. I want to be proactive. I want to be inclusive. I want to make sure folks who are being impacted have a voice. And I really believe we can't afford to leave it the way it was. Councilman Smith, I think appreciates his role as the chief of staff of Councilperson who has chaired this committee for forever, I guess sixteen years. And so the imaginations that occur, all the idiosyncrasies that exist, the nuances in how folks want to gain the system, you kind of pick it up over time. And so the recommendations on budget and finance, and from Plumb Committee, was trying its best to address how we respond and be responsive to our constituents through the planning police powers of the planning department. Without the staff, we cannot function. And yes, all the taxpayer dollars should be going to serving our communities, but if the tax dollars not there, we don't have the personnel. So I thank you for your support. I ask for my vote on thirty-seven D.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Reyes. I may call on you one more time. Mr. Alarcon wants to speak.
I would just like the department to, inclusive in the report that is coming back through council, I would like for an analysis of who uses the eighty-five percent of application process. I believe that it's primarily for the developers that are using it. And to suggest that others are using it, it may very well be the case, but if it's a large company that's using it against a competitor, then I don't mind charging them also. My primary focus is on keeping the fees reasonable for the community. And I think that that particular fee is used mostly by large companies, and I don't have a problem with increasing that to ninety percent or ninety-five.
We will conclude that in the report.
Thank you very much. Now, we have a number of items before us, and I'd like to ask the city attorney to walk us through each one, and then we'll, I think, vote on them one at a time.
I believe they can be voted on together.
All right.
If it's set up the way I think it should be. Council will be voting on item thirty-seven A, one and two. Those are the SEQA findings and the Director of Planning findings. And substitute thirty-seven D, the new ordinance, for thirty-seven A, three. Council could also vote on B, the motion regarding reporting back in thirty days. That is consistent. And then council, I believe, would want to receive and file C.
C, receive and file. All right. All right, let's see if we can open the roll on, does anybody have any questions? All right, do we want to do this collectively or?
Council President?
Yes.
If we did thirty-seven D first, this will ensure that we do not lose any fees, that we keep the old fee structure in place, and if we need to do thirty-seven A as a follow-up for a process.
Council can vote on that altogether if it.
Okay, let's do that then.
All right.
But I just want to make sure we don't end up without any fees.
All right, so then we're going to vote on thirty-seven A, one and two, substituting thirty-eight A, C for thirty-seven D, is that correct?
Thirty-seven D for thirty-seven A.
I got it backwards. Thirty-seven D for thirty-seven A and C. All right, thank you. Thank you for correcting me. And then thirty-seven B and thirty-seven C will be a receive and file.
Thirty-seven B could be adopted, and then thirty-seven C will be received and filed.
Okay. All right, let's open the roll on all of those items. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Thank you very much.
And also, just for council's information, the ordinance goes over for one week to October twenty-eighth.
Thank you. I believe we have a taxi commissioner before us today.
Yes, that's item number eight.
All right, if we like to take that item up now while the commissioner nominee is coming to the front table, Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you, Madam President. We in the Transportation Committee had a delightful interview with you. There were a lot of folks that came from different points of views to make themselves heard. If I could, just for my colleagues and for the cameras and the people watching this, tell us about your background and tell us why you've accepted this opportunity to be on the commission.
Thank you, Councilmember Rosendahl. My name's John Delora. I'm currently the executive director of the Delores Swirte Institute and a lecturer in Asian American Studies at UCLA right now. My father is a small business owner who used to make, actually Filipino sausages, langanisa in Los Angeles, and do a lot of deliveries to different Filipino small local stores. And my mother is a healthcare worker for the last many, many years. And both of them are Filipino immigrants, and part of my interest in this has a lot to do with my just whole background and the career that I've chosen for myself, which is a real big concern dealing with immigrant communities. And the taxicab commission especially interests me because the taxicab industry is one where you have a large number of African, South Asian, and Armenian immigrants who work in that particular industry. And this is my background, where I'm coming from. And right now, as I said before, I direct at the Delores Swirte Institute in the Community College District, and I teach Asian American Studies, especially with immigrant community subjects at UCLA.
Thank you very much for your opening comments on that. I think the immigration background, your ethnicity Filipino, your parents have been, many of our drivers come from all over the world, and your identification with them is a stellar plus. What about your politics? There were some concerns how you might represent yourself. There were independent drivers there, there were folks who were part of a group, and I know you handled yourself quite well with them. Would you, for my colleagues here, explain how you're going to be a consensus builder and a coalition builder, and that you're going to listen to all points of views?
Well, I think just my family background alone is what will help inform a lot of my decision-making, especially because my father's a small business owner. And what I've realized with small businesses is that small business owners don't just own a business, they also are the workers and employees in that business as well. And coming from a background where my mother is a worker and my father is a small business owner, you really can't separate the issues when it comes down to in terms of how an industry is run or the kind of conditions that should be in the workplace because they benefit both the owner and the employee because, as I said before, small business owners are also the same people driving as well.
That's enough of my questions. If any colleagues wants to add anything, I want to thank the mayor again for picking a brilliant young man that I know will make a big difference with all of us on that commission. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rosendahl. There are no further speakers in the queue. So, Madam Clerk, would you please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote?
Eleven ayes.
Congratulations. Next item.
I'm next, Madam President. I believe there's a request to take up item number twenty-four.
All right, item number twenty-four is next. The request comes from... Which council member requested item twenty-four? Mr. Cardenas. Okay, great. Mr. Cardenas.
Thank you very much. Can you introduce yourself to the council? I think this is the first time in your new title.
Yes, yes, it is, sir. My name is Guillermo Sespedes, and just, I'll make a couple of brief comments, both about me and about the item before you. I came to the grid office as a full-time staff member on December of oh-seven. At that time, I was the program manager for the Southwest Gang Reduction Youth Development Zone. In April of oh-eight, I took responsibilities for coordinating the Summer Night Lights Initiative, which was rolled out in two oh-eight to eight parks throughout the city. In March of oh-nine, I was formally appointed the Summer Night Lights Director. And then in September twenty-first, just a few weeks ago, I took over the position as Director of the Gang Reduction Youth Development Office.
And who was the person who had that title before you?
Jeff Carr, sir. A couple of key points about the item before you. At this time, we are respectfully requesting the authority to extend intervention contracts for agencies within the Gang Reduction Youth Development Zones, prevention and intervention contracts for agencies outside of the grid zone. And we also request authority to execute a new contract for the seventy-seven-two Gang Reduction Youth Development Zone. Just quick background, sir. On November eighth, November fifth, oh-eight, the grid office issued three RFPs. One was for intervention services in twelve gang reduction zones, and other RFP was prevention and intervention services outside the grid zone, and the third RFP was for citywide evaluation. In February of oh-nine, the council provided authority to negotiate and execute those contracts. In addition to authorizing that negotiation and execution of six-month contracts, City Council also approved options to renew the terms of each contract for two additional one-year terms, subject to the availability of funds and subject to city attorney approval. So at this point, we are requesting new contract terms for the following agencies. The other point that we're requesting, sir, is to have these contracts be aligned with the fiscal year for the city. This approval was based on the fact that if there were funds available and approval from the city attorney's office, at this time, all of the funds are already in the two oh-nine, two-ten adopted budget, with the exception of one contract, which is for the Bull Heights area for SEA, which will come from a mandated grant, the Edward Byrne mandated grant. We are requesting new contract terms to run from October first to June thirtieth, a nine month contract for the following agencies: Community Build, Solidarity and Enrichment Action, which covers four zones; Public Health Foundation Enterprise Aztec Rising, which covers two zones; Communities and Schools, which covers two zones; The Helper Foundation, the contract that they currently carry out in the Southwest Two area; and Kush Incorporated. Each contract should not exceed three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. We are also requesting extensions for the non-grid providers, and this is also for the period of October first to June thirtieth, a nine-month contract. And the agencies are Watts Labor Community Action Committee in Watts, Hathaway-Sycamore's Child and Family Services in Highland Park, Child and Family Guidance Center in the San Fernando Valley, and Asian American Drug Abuse Program in South L.A. The terms for those contracts should not exceed two hundred and eighty thousand dollars per non-grid zone. Thirdly, the contract extensions for non-grid intervention providers. And again, same contract period, October first to June thirtieth, a nine-month period. And the agencies are Toblerone Neighborhood Center, which covers two areas in San Pedro and Wilmington; Helper Foundation, which covers the area of Venice; and Public Health Foundation Aztec Rising, which covers Belmont Rampart. The new intervention provider for seventy-seven-two, as you know, Unity Two was terminated in July of oh-nine in the best interest of the city. They were initially responsible for the seventy-two, seventy-seven-two zone. Our office consulted with the city attorney, and we were told to look at the second highest scorer on the RFP process because the RFP is valid for three years. That agency, Adap Asian American Drug Abuse Program, declined our offer to accept the contract. The third highest scorer could not be used because it required a contractual relationship with the agency that had been terminated. Given that, we consulted with the city attorney's office to explore the option of a sole-source We looked at several areas: license to operate in the grid zone, administrative capacity, track record, reasonable cost of operation. The city attorney asked for a cost-benefit analysis to be done by the grid office. It was determined that that cost-benefit analysis was adequate, fair, and reasonable for the services provided. The funding for this contract is also available in the two oh-nine, two thousand ten adopted budget. We are asking for authority to execute that contract with the Helper Foundation, formerly known as Venice Two Thousand. And we asked that that contract be retroactive as they started to provide services in August. So that contract would run from August oh-nine to June thirtieth, two thousand ten, in the amount not to exceed four hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars. At this point, I will welcome your questions and try to answer them to the best of my ability. The rest of our staff is here in case that there are some things that I'm not able to answer to your satisfaction.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Mr. Cardenas, before we go on, I just want to caution everyone, we will be losing quorum at twelve o'clock, so if there's anything to be voted on, we have to get quorum at 12 o'clock, so if there's anything to be voted on, we have to get it done by then.
Okay. I'll try to talk like the guy in the American Express commercial. So I'll make my questions brief. When it comes to the intervention and prevention services, what is the difference between the services rendered within the grid zone and the services rendered outside the grid zone?
Well, the difference is basically is in volume, sir. The intervention contractors have a maximum of 50 cases that they need to case manage. They have a larger area to cover. And the services are pretty much identical. They're comprised of three components, which is the proactive peacekeeping activities, the violence interruption activities, and crisis response.
So the nature of the services are very, very similar?
Correct, sir.
Prevention intervention services, but there's...
No, no, no. Intervention in non-grid and intervention in the grid zone are pretty much identical. The same thing with prevention. The only difference is in the number of clients that need to be served.
Okay, and then the non-grid zone area just means that outside of that defined area?
Correct, sir.
Okay, and it's more regional than the smaller geographic grid zone area?
I'm not...
For example, in the valley, if you have somebody doing intervention-prevention work through one of these contracts in the valley, the geographic square mileage or what have you is larger generically than in the grid zone.
Correct, sir.
The grid zone can be a little bit geographically, a little smaller geographically.
Correct, sir.
Okay, but same services for all intent persons?
Same services, lower volume of clients.
Okay. Now, one of the things that we all committed to, the mayor's office, council members, everybody committed to having more responsibility, transparency, and tracking of everything that's going on when it comes to gang intervention-prevention work, reentry, whatever it is that we try to do to address these issues. When it comes to that, your report mentions that you're going to have a contractor track the progress, such as a client tracking system. How is that coming along?
The tracking system will be fully operational in January. It is called the Grids. More detailed information about the Grids, how it was developed and all of that, there's a person in our office that handles that. If you would like more information about the Grids, I could have him come up and answer those questions. But it will be fully operational in January.
Okay, so the most important thing, it'll be fully operational in January?
Correct, sir.
We can cover those details in the committee, because as the president just said, we're close to losing a quorum. When it comes to the service provided, an independent evaluator, how's that coming along?
That is coming along. We expect to have a final report in March of 2010. We are receiving quarterly reports. One is currently due that will be presented to us next week. And so we're looking at those reports and implementing changes or incorporating suggestions as those reports are filed to us.
Who's the evaluator?
The evaluators are the Urban Institute, and they subcontracted some services with Harder &amp; Company, the Urban Institute based in Washington.
Okay, all right. Thank you for coming forth and be ready, willing, and prepared to answer these questions. I had a few more questions, but like I said, we can cover those in more detail, especially the matters that have to do with something that's going to be implemented by January. So because of the interest of time, I just wanted to remind you, council members, that what's before us is a lot of contracts, a lot of important contracts, and we're dealing with life and death on this matter of gang intervention-prevention and those kinds of things. So this is a very important issue, and we'll continue to cover it through the committee process. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Cardenas. Mr. Allercon?
Very briefly, I communicated in a letter to the mayor my concerns about some of the rigidity of the program, particularly with regard to how clients are selected, as well as, and more pointedly in the letter, about the flexibility of intervention workers to do the groundwork outside of the specific grid zones. Now ironically, I have two grids, so I'm a benefactor of having both of those services very intensively in my council district, but the rest of the San Fernando Valley doesn't have any of it, and they get it by virtue of us allowing agencies to go do things, but it's really not part of the design. So can you speak specifically about how we could incorporate, or what the responses to that notion, and some of the work you're doing in that area?
Well, in intervention, the intervention contract stipulates that they are able to respond to gang-related incidents outside the grid zone, especially if those incidents affect what is taking place inside the grid zone. A prime example of that was obviously the horrendous and very painful shooting of a four-month-old that we had to respond to because it impacted the work inside the grid zone.
Okay, thank you. No further speakers in the queue on that item. Open the roll, please. Close the roll, then tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
All right, before we lose a quorum, thank you. Mr. Zine has asked that we take up 21 very quickly.
I'm sorry, Madam President. On item number four, that one had a card, and the card was withdrawn, and the Building and Safety Department has advised that that matter can be continued a week. So do you wish to take care of that one real quick, item number four?
Yes, please open the roll on item number four.
Actually, you can do it on unanimous vote if you wish.
I'm sorry, I can't hear.
It's being continued.
It's being continued a week, so you can do it on unanimous.
Oh, that's without objection. Fine, thank you. Item 21, Mr. Zine wanted to take up very quickly. There is one speaker card. Mr. Sax, would you please come forward, if you are still here?
Will Mr. Sax come forward? Can I ask 24 without objection?
Yes, please, go ahead. I'm sorry?
Fourth with on 24.
Fourth with on 24, without objection.
Madam Chair, on 21, other than the public speaker, we would request that this be approved.
Mr. Sax.
Thank you. You're going to approve authorization for hiring. Has anybody addressed the overtime accounts for departments? One of the revealing items regarding the LADOT shortage of funds for its traffic control is the revelation that there's an overtime account and there's a regular pay account. So has any of the overtime accounts been addressed for the departments? Has any of the overtime been addressed regarding the Fire Department, the Police Department, Public Safety Department, the traffic control? $800,000 in overtime account for traffic control for the LA Marathon and the LA Triathlon, leaving only $600,000 for special events, overtime. What's the status on the... I'm sorry?
Thank you very much, sir. There are no further speakers in the queue on this item, so Madam Clerk, would you please open the roll? Close the roll, then tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
And Madam President, that ordinance goes over for one week to October 28th.
All right, thank you very much. We are at bare quorum now.
Item 36, it's a closed-session item that will be done in open session.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I wanted to move item 36 to be taken up in open session unless there are any objections from my council colleagues. It's an item in my district that gets us once so close to creating a mini-city hall in the community of Highland Park, but we've been on this project for seven years. We're finally at this threshold. If I can move this in open session, I very much appreciate it.
And just for the record, the total of the settlement is $2,725,000, and new money on that is only $725,000. The rest has already been deposited.
That's correct.
And council can vote on that if they wish.
All right.
I'm sorry, City of LA versus Rutland.
There are no further speakers in the queue, so unless you want discussion to continue, we can...
Can we just call for the question?
Open the roll, then. Close the roll, then tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
All right, thank you.
Well, thank the City Attorney and their efforts. They've done a great job on this process. Thank you very much.
Can they walk on water?
That'll go forth with Mr. Reyes.
Okay, number 17 was called, especially by council member courts.
Okay, Mr. Corretts.
Yeah, I don't think we'll maintain a quorum for the duration of this item, but I wonder if we could have speakers from the public that won't be able to return at least speak to this item and then continue it.
All right, and then if we lose the quorum, I will read the remaining speakers' names into the record. One minute each to make sure that we give everybody an opportunity to speak, and I will call the people four at a time. First speaker will be Stephen Huey, followed by Mark Armbruster, followed by Michael Rosenfeld, followed by Robbie Hunter. If you could all come forward.
Good afternoon, council. My name is Stephen Huey. I'm from United Here Local 11. We represent 462 workers at the Century Plaza Hotel, some of whom have been working at the hotel for as long as 30 years, if not longer. These workers have served the many luminaries that have stayed at the hotel, and they maintain the splendor of the building, which has been widely recognized as Architect Minoriyama Zaki's epitome of modernist architecture. We're concerned that potential changes to the site may be an irreplaceable loss, thank you, for the tourism and hospitality industry, both economically and historically. As a little background, this is data provided by LA Inc. The Century Plaza is not only the largest hotel in the West Side by room number, but also by meeting space, and it represents 48% of the meeting space in the western section of the city of LA. And historically, the hotel was a large employer of African-Americans, employing as many as 70% African-Americans in an apartment. But that has changed as the industry has moved on, but the hospitality industry and the Century Plaza itself recognizes that African-Americans have been left out of that growth, and we are concerned that the history of the Century Plaza and opportunities for the living monuments of that hotel are missing.
Thank you very much. Mark Armbruster, and then Michael Rosenfeld. Is Michael Rosenfeld still here?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Mark Armbruster, Armbruster, Goldsmith, and Delvec, representing Next Century Associates, the owner of the Century Plaza Hotel. In all due respect, we believe that this motion is actually premature. We're very early in the process. We're working with the council office as well as the conservancy in the early preparation of the EIR to study all alternatives for this project property, including preservation alternatives. We think that process should go forth first, so that everything is properly analyzed, so that you know and can make a decision based upon all the information you have. So we're asking you not to cut this off at this early stage and to explore all viable options for this property. Short of that, we urge you to at least clarify Councilman Corretts's motion, so that it's clear that it applies only to the building and the structure itself, so that we can realistically evaluate all possible preservation alternatives that might in fact be viable.
Thank you. Michael Rosenfeld, and then Robbie Hunter.
Thank you so much, Mr. Councilmember, honorable councilmembers. I'm Michael Rosenfeld. I represent Next Century Associates, and I'd just like to echo Mr. Armbruster's comments and further point out that this motion is in the context of a project that is currently being analyzed by the city that would not only support the planning principles that have been put forward by this council with respect to pedestrian connectivity, environmental preservation, and transportation goals, but would also create 5,000 construction-related jobs and double the number of jobs that are currently presented by the property, as well as doubling the amount of revenue that the city benefits from this property presently, and additionally millions in dollars in fees. And that this is a time when we think that these are very important things to take into consideration in the city, as we struggle with many of these both planning and economic issues, and we just respectfully request that the council take a look at the historic preservation in the context of all of this. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Robbie Hunter, and then Piedmont Brown, and then Scott Diamond.
Good morning, Madam President, LA City Councilmembers. My name's Robbie Hunter. I'm here with the Building Trades, and I would ask that the council would look at this motion and defer to the EIR. The owner of this hotel property has proposed a new project on the site and are in the process of conducting extensive studies as a part of the Environmental Impact Report. As a part of the EIR, preservation alternatives will be analyzed. These studies will be critical to making an informed decision on the nomination for historical monument status. And it simply does not make sense to start that process before the facts are available. In this area, there have been antiquated buildings across the street. The ABC complex was renovated and had to be demolished because of structural concerns, and this project has assumed things. Structurally, it probably will not be developed. It'll have to be replaced. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Mr. Brown, and then Mr. Scott Diamond.
City councilmembers, my name's Piedmont Brown, the president of the ironworkers. I'm just asking for you guys to hold off on your decision to make the historical site until the EIR report's done. There's possibly a lot of construction jobs here at jeopardy for the future, and I would please consider that. Thank you very much.
Mr. Diamond.
Thank you. Scott Diamond again, from the Beverlywood Homes Association. In the last 20 years, I've lived and worked around Century City, and the only consistent element to Century City has been the Century Plaza as all the changes have come in. Since 1966, presidents, dignitaries, numerous galas, my own wedding occurred at the Century Plaza Hotel. Its surviving makes it historic in itself. This needs to be done now. I support Councilman Corretts's motion, and the reason it really needs to be done is to clearly define it on the front end, to save the structure in order for us to enter constructive discussions with the developers on adaptive reuse, viable economic redevelopment alternatives. But none of it can be done unless you, on the front end, define what the clear historic elements of the structure are. Thank you.
Barbara Broidy, Jan Reichman, and Flora Chu, and Mike Bueller. If you're all here, if you can come forward.
Thank you. My name is Barbara Broidy. I'm here on behalf of Westwood South with Santa Monica Boulevard Homeowners Association and our community to strongly support our councilmember's motion before you. I would like to help to build the case of the importance of adopting this measure today. It is not too soon. The process of initiating and reviewing this property as a potential cultural or historical monument will generate information essential to the analysis of future uses for this building and the property in question. To do it later is backwards. It will make us have to backtrack through the entire process. The scoping period for a proposed project on this site has already closed, and environmental review is underway. In order for a meaningful analysis of the property to be made and assessment of the cultural-historical value is needed. Only with this information can preservation and development options be weighed. The analysis will help to identify economically feasible alternatives for consideration that takes into account jobs, opportunities for building. We are a reasonable community, and we want to make decisions based on full information. Thank you.
Thank you. Jan Reichman?
My name is Jan Reichman. I'm president of the Comstock Hills Homeowners Association, a neighborhood within walking distance of Century City and the Century Plaza Hotel. I do not want to see yet another piece of Los Angeles history destroyed in the name of creating jobs in a bad economy. We never hear how many jobs will be lost when our city rubber stamps yet another demolition. What will happen to those who are currently employed by this landmark hotel? If you were to take an architectural tour of Los Angeles, there are very few examples of modernist architecture of the '60s, let alone one that made the cover of Time Magazine. We understand that one needs to work with the developer to make the structure economically feasible. We are willing to do that, but we are not willing to see something that we have cherished since the '60s be demolished and be short-sighted because of an untempered, market-driven enterprise.
Flora Chu?
Good morning. My name is... My name is Flora Chu. I'm the preservation advocate for the Los Angeles Conservancy. We believe the Century Plaza Hotel is one of the most significant commercial buildings in Los Angeles. The hotel was built in 1966 as a centerpiece of Century City, with a sweeping curve exemplifying the bold optimism and confidence of that era. The Century Plaza was designed by the Japanese-American architect Minori Yamazaki, a major architect best known for the World Trade Center Towers in New York City, as well as several award-winning projects around the country. The Century Plaza Hotel has also been a vital asset and cultural touchstone for Los Angeles since its opening. It is consistently used by a unique cross-section of politics, entertainment, and society, from hosting the official welcome-home dinner for the Apollo 11 astronauts, to being a favor of President Reagan during his presidency. The Century Plaza remains an excellent example of 1960s architecture and a defining building for Los Angeles. We believe it easily meets several criteria for historic designation, and we urge you to support Councilmember Corretts's motion to initiate the HCM nomination. Thank you.
Mike Bueller.
Good afternoon, members of council. My name is Mike Bueller. I'm director of advocacy for the Los Angeles Conservancy. The Conservancy joins others before you today in supporting historic cultural monument status for the Century Plaza Hotel now, as an essential step to ensure that alternatives to demolition are meaningfully considered in the EIR. The nomination will not only resolve the hotel's historic status at the front end of the environmental review process, but also facilitate the development of alternatives by identifying features of the hotel that should be protected, and perhaps just as important, identifying parts of the site that are not significant and do not need to be preserved. In other words, the motion before you will help provide clarity early in the entitlements process, something the development community is often clamoring for. We urge you to support Councilmember Corretts's motion and initiate the monument designation, monument process for the Century Plaza Hotel now, without further delay. Thank you.
Daniel Wright. Is Mr. Daniel Wright still here? All right, Mr. Wright is not coming forward. All right, our final speaker will be Marion Dodge.
Good afternoon, councilmembers. My name is Marion Dodge, 2648 North Commonwealth Avenue. I support the designation of the Century Plaza Hotel as historic cultural monument. It's already an icon in the city of Los Angeles. There may be a reluctance to vote for historic designation for a relatively youthful building, and that reluctance may be a personal one. As much as I hate to admit it, I'm now historic, and I suspect that many of you are too. The problem is, if you don't save a great building now, it won't be here for you to protect later. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Corretts, that is the end of our speaker cards. I will now close public comment. What's your pleasure on this?
I would suggest that since I know a number of councilmembers have questions, including some that have left, we'd be better off to continue this to the next meeting and have a discussion.
All right, so without objection, we'll...
Next week would be, would be better. So let's continue it to next week.
All right, so you would prefer to continue this to next week, then?
Yeah, how about we continue this to next Tuesday?
And that would be the 27th.
All right. That gives us enough time. Madam Clerk?
Thank you.
Have it properly noticed. All right, fine, we will continue this item until next Tuesday, and thank you to the public speakers who came down today to speak on this item. What is our next item, Madam?
Next item, Madam President, is item number 19, and that was called special by Councilmember Rosendahl.
Mr. Rosendahl.
Okay, let's go to the next item.
Okay, we'll go to the next item.
That would be number 23, and that was called special for cards.
Again, Mr. Sacks, if you are present, please come forward, as we are about to lose Is Mr. Sacks still present?
Oh, thank you. You didn't notify me about a delay in time, so I'm hoping I get two minutes, Madam Chair. As you mentioned in every item that you've spoken on, you've limited the time, except the ones where I spoke. You're going to deal with neighborhood council elections. Who's going to deal with the council, city council actions? We've heard some wonderful discussions today. No compliments for the city council. I'll compliment the city council. You're doing a wonderful job balancing the budget, finally acting on some items after eight years of waiting.
Excuse me, Madam President. He does not appear to be talking about this neighborhood council election matter. I have number 23.
My time is running, Madam Chair. Please stop my time, Mr. City Attorney. Council elections. We need council elections, not neighborhood council elections.
Please open the roll on this item, Madam Chair. Close the roll, and then tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
What's the next item?
Next item is item 33, and that was called special for cards, and there is an amending motion that has been distributed to the councilmembers.
All right, I'm checking for item 33. I do not have any cards in this. All right, so there are no speakers in the queue. We can open the roll on that item. Close the roll, and then tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Next item.
Mr. Rosendahl is back. Did you wish to take up item number 19 at this time?
Yeah, it'd be very quick, colleagues. Could I, could I ask our great city clerk, June Legmede, please have a seat?
Good morning, honorable members. What you have before you, item 19, deals solely and wholly with the concept of updating and replacing the city's current archaic voting system from scratch. Module, Module 1 would be the voting system in its entirety. Module 2 is a small subcomponent, which is a vote-by-mail automation system component with integrated inserting, and Module 3 is another small subcomponent, which is a mail management system. We put this RFP out to bid in 2008. Eight proposals were received. A review panel of the city clerk, the county registrar recorder, or county clerk, the CAO, and the ITA reviewed all responders. After review, the decision was made as to the entire voting system to not purchase at this time. The cost is quite expensive, ranging anywhere from $18 to $40 million. In addition, none of the proposers proffered state-of-California certification, and finally, and most important, it would be premature for the city to purchase its own voting system instead of leveraging its scarce funds by partnering with the county registrar recorder. The county has already begun a voting system assistance project to accomplish this. City clerk staff have already attended the first symposium. The idea that the county is having is to develop a private-public partnership and to solicit as much public information as possible, so that whatever is purchased will be truly comprehensive and flexible. For Module 2, this is a process that we and the city clerk elections are doing by hand at a cost of about $195,000 per election, so we do think there is validity in purchasing a system in the amount of $532,000, and we're asking that you allow us to investigate contract negotiations with the responder, Bow Bell &amp; Howell, and allow the CAO to come back with a recommended funding plan. We will not contract with this contractor without further council approval. And the third module, the small subcomponent of a mail management system, we do not recommend purchasing or leasing at this time, but we will negotiate with the county to use their system and report back with their fee cost, and that summarizes what you have before you.
Okay. Thank you, Madam President, and I know the clock has been running, though I haven't said a word yet. But my bottom line is this: we need to be aware of what this process is going forward. The one point that I saw in my mind was Point 4, which was, "Request a city administrative officer to report to council on funding options and recommendations for purchase or lease a vote-by-mail automated system with integrated inserting." There's not been a report by either the CAO or the chief legislative analyst. They have not completed a financial analysis of this, and the community impact statement there's been none submitted. So I just want to highlight that, but my interest has to do with voting by mail as an option. Just real quickly, we had an election in CD2. How much did it cost us?
$1.9 million for both the runoff and the, for the primary and the runoff.
And we had very little voter turnout. Some people have been anecdotally saying, "If it had been voted by mail, it's possible that we would have a much larger turnout, and people would have did." So I know we're looking at that as one of the strategies. I strongly urge us, in off-elections like that, that we vote by mail. You'd get a greater participation. It would be cheaper than what we've done, this expense. It was a joke, the percentage of voter turnout, it cost like, what, 80 bucks a vote or something like that? It was pretty expensive, and in this downtime, we need to think about voting by mail as a real strategy going forward with our great city. That's what I wanted to highlight on this. Thank you for your leadership. Thank you, Madam President.
Yeah. All right, Mr. Smith, then Ms. Hahn. No, Mr. Smith. Mr. Smith, then Ms. Hahn. First, Mr. Smith, then Ms. Hahn.
Thank you very much. Thank you. And Mr. Rosendahl agreed, and that's why I put a motion about a week or two ago that we should explore for special elections this option, because I think we all see miserable turnouts in special. What was the cost of doing just one district? Did you look at that option, if you were just to do one council district only, like on the CD2 case? If you were just to do CD2 alone? Stop my time?
As was explained to me, if it were completely vote-by-mail, there would be a cost advantage. Where it would not be a cost advantage is if you did vote by mail with one or more voting centers for people that preferred not to vote by mail to go to a place. If you do vote by mail with voting centers, then it actually becomes more expensive. But if you restrict it to completely, wholly vote-by-mail, then there is cost savings. I don't have the precise amount, but we are exploring that topic. The city clerk is doing a report on two council motions, including yours, on this topic. We will report in the near future on that.
So that's coming back at a separate, then?
That is a separate issue.
We're just saying today, we're saying it's too much. We're not going to do it right now. We'll look at it in the future, but as far as this motion that I had, just future specials only, and I think there's a tremendous advantage, we obviously have miserable turnouts in specials. San Diego, didn't San Diego experiment with this a couple of years ago?
I know Honolulu did a all-vote-by-mail. They did not spend enough money and time, however, in publicizing it, so the turnout was quite low. That would be a very essential in a complete vote-by-mail, that you get a very aggressive advertising and marketing message out there.
Okay. That's good. I'll wait to hear back then on that issue. I think that's where we really need to focus. That's where the problem really is, the bad problem. Obviously, voter turnout is a problem everywhere, except on an occasional basis, but certainly in special elections, it has historically always been extremely low, because they don't fall in a normal pattern of people thinking about elections. So that's why I encourage you to come back and want to see that, and for this, we're just going to wait and see what happens. I'm fine with that, too, but I believe special is where we really need to make that gain and get voters more involved, and it saves money. What more can you ask for? So, thank you. I'll wait for that report back. Thank you.
Ms. Hahn.
Thank you. I apologize trying to jump ahead of you, Mr. Smith. I was oversight. I did not hear your name being called. I'm a little confused on exactly what we're doing, and I wanted to go back to your comment on, there were some recommendations that we not do this at this time, that it was too expensive, and none of the systems were, had been certified.
Certified by the state of California.
Right. So what exactly are, what are you recommending?
There are three separate modules. One, Module 1 was the entire system, which could range us anywhere from 80, 18 to 40 million. We're saying, "Don't go with that."
We're saying, "Don't do that." Okay.
Let's watch what the county does, and then propose partnering with them in the future. There's Module 3, which is a mail management system. We're also saying, "Too expensive, don't go with that. Allow us to look into borrowing the counties and seeing how much they would charge us in fees."
So you're looking at two.
No. Module 2 could be useful. We are spending $195,000 per election for hand insertion, and there's human error involved. For $500,000, we could buy a system that would totally automate it, save us money, and reduce human error. We are not proposing to purchase it at this time. We're asking the CAO to come back to council with a funding proposal and for you to allow us to at least talk to the vendor and say that we're interested in pursuing it.
And this is just a system that automates...
It's a subsystem of the larger system.
...automates the insertion of the ballot?
Signature verification.
Oh, we can't hear her. What?
Signature verification. On vote-by-mail ballots, they come back. Every signature has to be verified by hand against the voting record, and these machines will do that for you.
I see. And who uses this right now?
The County of Los Angeles.
The county uses it. Okay. So you're just exploring the possibility of what would be the funding...
We believe it'll save us money. It will take three election cycles, or six years, to recover itself, but after that, again, it eliminates the human error and also saves money, because you'd need less staff.
Right. However, vote-by-mail is what percentage of our average response during our elections? How many, how many, what percentage of our voters vote by mail currently? Like, how many voted in the CD2?
Well, we know that it's, over the last four years, it's increased 117% from what used to be...
I'm not asking how much it's increased. I want to know, what's the percentage of our voters?
I don't have it off the top of my head.
June, do you know?
No, but I'll be very happy to email that in.
I mean, to me, that's a lot about what we need to look at when we make that decision. If this is specifically for our vote-by-mail group, then we need to know what we're talking about, what percentage of our voters actually are. I mean, we all want more, but to spend any money right now on a very, very small percentage, I'm just thinking that's what the information I would like to have before we make a final decision.
I think it's more substantial than you suspect. We'll get the number to you.
Okay. I would like to see that. And again, I think, one of the things I always say, right now, anybody can vote by mail. I mean, a lot of people, I think, are still under the impression that you have to have a doctor's note, or you have to verify that you're not going to be in town. People can be permanent vote-by-mail voters, so, but I just would like to know that percentage.
I would be glad to...
And thank you for your work on this.
Thank you.
Okay, bye. Okay, bye.
All right, Mr. Lavange? We just lost a quorum? We just lost, did we just lose a quorum?
Is vote-by-mail? I wouldn't think it would be that much.
Well, Mr. Lavange pressed his button. Have you withdrawn that?
Yeah.
All right, open the roll, please.
I called for the question.
Open the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Madam President, item number 34, the substitute motion has been distributed on 34C.
Okay, you want to open the roll on that? Close the roll?
I don't know.
Tabulate the vote?
I have one question.
There are cards on that item, sorry.
We're breaking quorum.
We have Arnold Sachs and Dr. Clyde Williams. Okay, Dr. Williams, why don't you speak first, since you're closer, and Arnold Sachs can make his way up here?
Madam President, we've lost a quorum, so that matter can be continued then to the next meeting.
All right, we'll have to continue that matter to the next meeting, and we will put Dr. Williams and Mr. Sachs' cards in the file. Thank you very much. We have lost quorum. At 12:30, meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.
Your city, your channel.
We now join our scheduled program in progress.